In the order, I would like to ask Mr. Sullivan to come forward and lead us in the invocation. And Sean Reed, I would like for you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. I ask you to bow with me, please. Racist heavenly father, we thank you so much for the occasion of this evening. Father, we thank you for this council and their willingness to serve in this capacity. We bless, we ask you bless them in their decisions, bless them with discernment that only you can provide, and give them peace in their decisions that they make tonight. Father, we thank you so much for this great city, state, and nation, and those who are serving to defend this great land tonight. Give them comfort and peace, protection. Thank you so much for your son, Jesus, and we ask all these favors in his holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, we do have a very lengthy agenda tonight. So I would ask that everybody maintain their decorum this evening as we move through these issues and that your comments would be kept professional and dignified. That being said, we do have a couple of proclamations this evening. Roger Ross, can you meet me down front, please? Can you hear me now? Ladies and gentlemen, this is Roger Ross, retired captain Roger Ross from Midwest City Police Department. How many years are you here?
Thirty-four plus.
Thirty-four plus. Leave me my three years. Your hair is whiter than mine. Well, anyway, in Midwest City, we love to honor our employees that stay here and do their time with us. We have 500 of the best employees in the state of Oklahoma, and it's an honor for me to honor them as they move on to their next, whatever that is.
Chapter.
Chapter. So whereas police captain Roger Ross began his career in 1989 as a police officer and promoted through the ranks as corporal in March of 93, sergeant in 2004, lieutenant in 2008, and captain in 2020, faithfully serving Midwest City community until his retirement in May of 23. Captain Ross is well-loved and well-appreciated for his ability to interact professionally, proficiently, professionally, and positively in a negative and distressing situations, and his leadership is greatly, going to be greatly missed. Whereas he served as field training officer investigator over 30 years on the SWAT team, during which Captain Ross was involved in several high-profile case investigations while serving as detective and detective supervisor. Whereas over the years, Roger's heart for the people has shown through his volunteer work with such things as shop with a cop and autumn house puzzle tournament, specifically having great compassion for the elderly and children, children victims. He would go above and beyond in his efforts to comfort them and their families to ensure justice for them. Whereas due to his excellent professional work ethic, he's received many letters of appreciation, outstanding meritary service accommodation, Officer of the Quarter, two police department unit citations for his outstanding contributions to the SWAT team, a police combat cross award, and in 2023 was entered into the Hall of Fame for successful military or meritorious service from the Middel 100. Therefore, in honor of Captain Ross, I'm Matthew Dukes, mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim July 25th, 2023 as Roger Ross Day in the city of Midwest City, and ask that all residents and merchants show their gratitude to honor Captain Ross for his commitment to this community and make it a safer place to work and live. All right, you don't get away just yet. Whoa, 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 whoa.
So in special recognition of Roger Ross for loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of the city of Midwest City, March 16th, 1989 through May 10th, 2023. It's a long time, 34 years, so. Roger, it has flown by. Roger's been an excellent employee for this city for all along, has I've been here since 2000, and someone I very much respected and is always known for doing the right thing. And I'm going to miss you and your leadership in the department, someone we can always rely on. And it's been a, you know, it's brought me peace to know that you're there and when you're in charge of a scene. So we're going to miss you and thank you for the service to this great city.
I miss you guys too. Appreciate it.
You didn't say anything?
Mr. Hughes, come on down. Another retired. This is Jeff Hughes, y'all. He's from the other side of the fence in the fire department. Known Jeff for a long time. He's professional in everything he does. And you're pulling, pulling the plug, are you? Whereas senior firefighter Jeffrey Hughes began his career in 2009 as a firefighter and became senior firefighter in 2012, retiring in 2023. Whereas Jeff is known and appreciated for his dependability, respectful, friendly attitude, and always eager to help coworkers as well as volunteer for such things as giving out vaccinations to city employees. You didn't give me mine.
I would have.
Okay. And their family members. Whereas he's invaluable in keeping fire equipment and the fire station's good working order, assisting improvement projects throughout the years. Whereas we are grateful for Jeff's faithful service to the city of Midwest City community over the years, helping victims with his life-saving skills and heart for those in need. So therefore, in honor of senior firefighter Jeffrey Hughes, I'm Matthew Dukes, mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim tomorrow, July 26th, as Jeffrey Hughes Day in the city of Midwest City, and ask that citizens and merchants show their gratitude for his service to our community. And by the way, like it or not, Jeff helped me with my campaign the first go around, didn't he?
I'm not supposed to tell anybody.
Okay, now we'll move into the community-related announcements. Mr. Lyon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start the evening with a report on our sales and use tax for the city of Midwest City, starting our fiscal year, which is July 1st. And the month of July was a very good month for us. That's half of June and then a projection on the first half of July. But we were, our sales and use tax was up 6.5%, which is one of the higher in the metro areas. So we're very excited about that against projection. It's up 5.45%. So thank you to citizens of Midwest City who shop in this great city, and this sales tax is what primarily supports our police and fire and our general fund operations. Very good report and a good way to start the year. Saturday, August 19th is our next Cruisin' for Coffee event at the Santa Fe parking lot on 29th Street. It's an excellent event. If you've not been to it, to see all kinds of classic cars from all over the metro area. Second, we're planning two town hall meetings, sharing the same information. One will be on Tuesday, August 29th, and the other will be Thursday, August 31st, here in the council chambers at 6:00 PM to discuss the September 12th sales tax election ballot information, which we'll go into detail regarding asking the citizens for an extension of a current sales tax. It's not a rate increase or a sales tax increase. It's maintaining into our capital improvement funds, which now is going for the upgrade to our sewer treatment plant, so continuing into capital improvement. So we'll be here to talk and great discussion. We welcome everyone to attend that either one of those two meetings for more details. No, they're both, both here. Yeah. All right, Mayor, that's all I have. Yes, sir.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're in a, we're in a kind of a out of order for our usual agenda. And I would go to discussion item number one, Mr. Lyon.
Mr. Mayor, if I may be recognized, I'd like to move to suspend the rules and consider the only executive item that is placed on this agenda first. In other words, to move into executive session immediately.
That request is denied. Mr. Lyon, go ahead.
Discussion item one, discussion, consideration, possible action of appointing former Ward 3 councilperson Rick Dawkins to replace Megan Bannen, who has resigned as the Ward 3 council member until a new city council member can be appointed, which will occur in April of 2024.
Chair to entertain a motion.
I'd like to have some discussion on this, mainly addressing some procedural things. I'd like to make a suggestion for consideration of the mayor and the council and along with the city manager. I would like to recommend that the next time that there is a vacancy, that that be publicly, become a public notice to the general public that we have about a month to notify the general public of the vacancy, and also to outline the criteria of qualification to qualifying residents along with an application process for qualified residents interested in filling a vacancy or declaring their candidacy to submit their resume and their bio to the city clerk. That be forwarded to the city council for consideration and the two top nominees that are voted on by the collective council body to be brought before a public meeting to represent their candidacy, and then we take a final vote in that process.
I'm pretty sure that violates the charter because the mayor gets to pick according to the charter. And while we might not like the charter, it is our governing body. If you want to change it, then it needs to go to a vote of the people.
Again, I'm.
Your request has been duly noted.
Make a motion to approve.
I would like to get clarification of important information because I didn't review the charter and there was no clear language.
I'll make a motion and have me a second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote, please.
Eads?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Banna?
Nay.
Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
Yes. Motion carries. Mr. Dawkins, we have a formality to take care of. Could you come down and meet me? Unfortunately, ladies and gentlemen, we had a council member resign. And so to fill the gap until the next major, next general election, Rick Dawkins has volunteered to step up and fill the gap. And Rick, longtime resident of Midwest City, was principal at Trobe Elementary, a longtime member of Middel School System, and served on council for eight years. And his family owned Dawkins Insurance, so well-qualified and welcome back, Rick. So would you raise your hand, please? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Rick Dawkins.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution.
Obey and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oklahoma.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oklahoma.
And the charter and ordinances of Midwest City.
And the charters and ordinances of the city of Midwest City.
I affirm that I will faithfully.
I affirm that I will faithfully.
And ethically discharge.
And ethically discharge.
My duties to the best of my abilities.
My duties to the best of my abilities.
As temporary Ward 3 council member.
As temporary Ward 3 council member.
And the city council as a trustee.
And the city council as a trustee.
Of the municipal authority.
Of the municipal authority.
The hospital authority.
The hospital authority.
The economic development authority.
The economic development authority.
The utilities authority.
The utilities authority.
Of the city of Midwest City.
Of the city of Midwest City.
I affirm that I will not knowingly.
I affirm that I will not knowingly.
Receive.
Receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the, for the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Welcome back.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, as these people are walking out the door right here, I would like to thank my wife, my daughter, my granddaughter, grandson, Jess and Mary Husky, and Mark and Marquita Cordray, and, and the man who's really responsible for putting me through this, Eddie Reed, former mayor of Midwest City. And Eddie just stepped out, but 21 or 22 years ago, Eddie Reed put me on the planning commission. And without that, maybe the city would be better off. But, but from that day forward, I've, I've been involved either on the planning commission or hospital authority or several different areas around our city. I could never give this city half as much as this city has given me. This is the greatest city in the world. I love this place. It's my home. And I'm honored to be able to be part of this council, and I thank you, and I thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
To correct a procedural error, Ward 5, Ms. Banna did have a motion on the, on the floor. Do I have a second?
Are you referring to my initial motion? I thought that was rejected by you.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought I heard you say that it was rejected.
Your first one was, the second one was, on the, on what I'm talking about is the, the addition to or the suggestions that you made on bringing forth another candidate.
So since you were not going into executive session, the motion is back. I don't think you technically made a motion.
She, she didn't make a motion to go into the executive session, or did you?
I'll let, she can clarify.
That was part of discussion, and it was closed.
Then I apologize and we'll move on. Thank you. Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on consent agenda so that the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any council member requests to discuss an item where unanimous consent cannot be received, then the items or items will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may be recognized, I'd like to pull items 17 and 18 for discussion, but I move to approve the other consent agenda items.
I have a motion on the floor. Who was the second? I have a motion and a second. The motion is to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of items 17 and 18. Any further discussion? Go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Eads?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Dawkins?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Banna?
Yes.
Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
Yes. Item 17, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action of reappointing Jack Frye and Sherri Beard to the Urban Renewal Authority for a three-year term ending July 31st, 2026.
Make a motion to the.
Second.
Are we going to have discussion on any of these items? Because that's the purpose of having, it was pulled for discussion. So again, is there somebody who can give me a definition and scope of duties of the Urban Renewal Authority Board? This is a public meeting and we have these meetings in order to educate the public and engage them and in order to have a symbolism of democracy, I believe.
One and one, there's a motion in the second.
Are you calling for the question?
Yep.
Have a call for the question. We have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote.
Eads?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Dukes? I'm sorry, Dawkins?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Banna?
Nay.
Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
Yes.
Item 18.
If you need to say the motion carries.
Discussion, consideration of possible action of reappointing Tammy Pope, Ward Two, Scott Young, Ward Four, and Elaine Winterick, Ward Six, to the Citizens Advisory Committee on Housing and Community Development for additional four-year terms ending August 12th, 2027.
Since there was a question on urban renewal, I have the information on the, this particular one, the Citizens Advisory Committee. What it does is it is a committee that reviews and makes recommendations to the council regarding the city's federal allocation of CDVG funds. The person that's nominated for Ward Two, Tammy Pope, has been on this since 2002 and according to staff has served faithfully and the staff would like for her to remain on the committee.
Move to approve.
So there were, I'm sorry, before you guys proceed, if that's allowed. So I got an explanation and some background on Ward Two nominee, but there was no resume, no qualifications or bios that were submitted with these applications. Again, I'm going to express something I've expressed. We seem to appoint the same individuals for very long terms. When we look deeper within the scope of duties of certain boards and certain candidates' professional lives, there seems to appear to be certain potential conflicts of interest. And again, with that said, I'm just concerned about the look of impropriety, the lack of concern to really be serious about reducing conflicts of interest and not reappointing the same individuals to the same boards and bodies.
Point of clarification. Mr. City Attorney, is there a requirement by charter or ordinance for such a review as has been alluded to by Councilwoman Banna for a nominee to the Citizens Advisory Committee on Housing and Community Development?
Not that I have read or found.
Does ordinance 3441 in any way implicate that?
In my opinion, no.
So with that being said, I'm going to renew my motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote.
Eads?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Dawkins?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Banna?
Nay.
Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now move into our discussion items. Discussion item number two now. Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration of possible action accepting the plan report for the East Side sanitary sewer study from Freeze &amp; Nichols Incorporated. Mr. Bundy will start us.
Good evening. Approximately a year ago, we hired Freeze &amp; Nichols or retained them for studying our sewer capacity out east. The area in question is all served by one principal lift station and then there's other lift stations that serve that. So we studied the whole basin. And this was in response to a lot of development inquiries in that area. Last spring in 2022, we felt like we would be running into a situation where we didn't have sewer capacity. So that's where led us to this and Freeze &amp; Nichols is here to present the study to you all. Clay Herndon.
Hi, Mayor, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to talk to you about this project. We will talk a little bit about the East Side Sewer Study and Master Plan. Try to keep it high level and the clicker will work. Brandon gave me. There we go. So you see in front of you today is a little bit of a framework of the process that we use, a pretty standard process to go through and when developing a master plan of this sorts, one we've done and developed through, for many communities over the years of being in business. It starts with data collection and review of information, flow monitoring, working through analysis, developing a hydraulic model, ultimately of doing evaluation and analysis of the existing system, projecting the flows that'll come from future system growth, identify those project triggers and then finally develop a capital improvement plan and summarize that in a report. So the first step is to identify your basin. Using the information from the city's comp plan, we evaluated the amount of population growth that we will, we are expecting in this basin. So using that information, we are able to determine how much growth is going to occur in this area and then how, where will it occur? We try to identify as well as when might it occur to help try to find those trigger points in developing that capital improvement program and ultimately the projects that are going to come out of that. This area is predominantly single-family with a little bit of commercials and other elements thrown in there. And based on the information that we've been able to obtain, we identify how many house or how many people per household there will be within this development area. So working with the city staff, we know that there are definitely developments. Mr. Brandon, Mr. Bundy alluded to that. We know that those are, those are being talked about, they're identified and we've put them on a map and we identify where those areas might be. And then we did look, there is one area that is outside the city limits that we wanted to make sure that we incorporated into this study area because it has a high potential to be served by this wastewater basin. So with that, we're able to then put in temporary flow meters to identify the flows that are, that are in that system. We are able to then use that information to identify areas that are, have high inflow and infiltration, which is basically rainwater getting into your wastewater system. We want to try to prevent that, but also we want to, if it's going to occur, we want to know where it's occurring and how bad it is occurring. And we use that information to then calibrate our hydraulic model that we are going to eventually build here in the next couple of steps. To do that, we've put flow meters out in the system. We put eight flow meters in the system at very strategic locations to help with model calibration. We also identified field elements that would help us build that hydraulic model and then calibrate that model, such as vertical elevation of manholes and such. So again, building on the infrastructure that, and the assets that the city already has, GIS system in this case, we took that GIS system, the field information that we have and we build an all-pipes model. And then we use that information from our flow meters to then calibrate our model such that we have good field accuracy of the data that we have, a way we can make future projections based on that information. We also have meetings with staff to verify that what we're showing in our model aligns with what they're seeing out in the field. And so we do a lot of that information gathering together as a collaborative tool with the city. So once we've built our model, we look at how much flow is in the system, in the existing system, and we try to identify deficiencies within the existing system area. We have basically narrowed it down in the existing system for this assessment area. It's really identified as Hiawassee Lift Station and the East I-5 Lift Station. Those are your two primary choke points within this area that cause the system to maybe be a little bit under capacity. So once we have developed the issues with the existing system, we overlay the proposed growth, we overlay our design storm and then we calibrate, with our calibrated model, we're able to identify projects that need to be put into place or constructed to either address the existing capacity issues that have been identified or be able to serve that future growth, as well as figure out what are their priority projects and then figure out what is our trigger points for, to allow the development to occur within this basin and then what projects need to then happen after that. So that all, this is a pretty map of the capital improvement plan. What it ultimately boils down to is a list of projects, priority projects and a fairly good-sized dollar amount of capital improvements that need to be made to be able to facilitate the existing system and the system growth that is anticipated in this area.
From your study, are we nearing, getting close to capacity?
There are some areas within this, within this basin that are at capacity.
Okay.
Or above capacity.
And it's, it's not that I'm questioning you and Brandon will tell you, I had to read this several times to figure it out because there's a lot of big words in it.
You probably fell asleep a couple of times and it's an engineer report.
Couldn't fall asleep because, but you mentioned growth and I think it's important that everybody understand what you predicted the growth will be in just a little over 25 years, which will all be gone from here, but you're predicting that there's, if we're at capacity now and in 25 years, you're predicting a 60% growth of population in this area. On executive summary number one, it went from 2022 is 10, 5, 40 and in 2047 it's 17, 3, 31. That's 60%. That's a lot of people and we're at capacity now, correct? And is it an accurate statement to say from reading this, if we don't do something now with the lift stations, if they're not maintained and operated correctly and updated, it could cause us long-term problems. The biggest one is it could back up in people's houses and then we as a city are liable for that. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
You have four questions going on.
The initials, the, oh, correct.
I was going to say, to answer your backup question, yes, if we are the cause of a backup into somebody's home, yes, we can be held liable for that for the damages through a tort claim. That is correct.
And the population growth is in your report.
Okay.
Is that correct?
But he looks hasn't yet, so is that an accurate figure or not?
I'll, I'll take this. So the map, when it shows the proposed developments, those are people that have come to us and talked about developing the property. So these are, are people that are either through the process, well into the process, but they're not people that are, are just, hey, I'm going to, I'm going to build some houses. I mean, they're engaged engineers, financing, all that. Those developments represent over 2,000 houses. So that's where that growth comes from. I think it goes from around 10,000 to 17,000.
Correct.
Persons. And that's if all the undeveloped land develops as we think. I mean, there's a lot of assumptions in there about single-family and multifamily.
Okay, so, but if I'm understanding you, Mr. Bundy, what we're talking about there is hypothetical because until all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed, it doesn't mean that we're putting people in houses in that area. That's just the people who have talked with you, applied, shown interest, et cetera. So we don't have a definite number of, in the next five years, we're going to have 2,000 new homes on the east side as we sit here today.
If we didn't, if we did not talk to the developers and tell them we're doing this study, you would have seen plats for hundreds of homes already. In fact, tonight, there is a development in this basin.
Okay. Work with my question, please.
Okay.
Okay? My question is, right now, today, I understand what you're saying, but for the study, they would have been moving forward, but right now, today, we don't have a definite figure that there's going to be 2,000 new homes built in the next five years. There's no guarantee right now, today.
Correct.
You're talking about the hypothetical.
Correct.
Okay. Now, I want to talk about the real for a second. We authorized this study to be done on the east side, okay? So where do the results of this study fall in line with the comparison of the functionality and the capacity of the existing sewer systems that we already have in the city of Midwest City?
You mean across the west side?
I mean anywhere in the city of Midwest City. I know for a fact that I live in a neighborhood, as many people do, where the sewer lines are every bit of 60 years old. And we've had this conversation because there's constant development in my ward, okay? For real, like it's already went through, we've already approved it, et cetera. It's waiting to be built. So we know it's coming. So in comparison, what I want to know is in comparison to this east side study, where are we at in comparison to the need for this east side study and what is being suggested by this gentleman to where we are in the rest of the city?
So this study was in response to all the development and I will say that staff absolutely wants to do a study of the entire city.
Okay, and I'm saying that I am not agreeable with moving forward with putting other sewer priorities in place when we don't have a comparison across the board for all the needs of the city. That's my position with regard to this right now, okay? And what you're telling me is, give me one second. What you're telling me is that comparison hasn't been made yet. It's a lot like our community development aspect where we have a list of projects that need work on drainage and they're being compared and contrasted against each other for where is the greatest need, okay? My ask is we do the exact same thing with the sewer line system.
I think the Director of Public Works can step in and maybe add some clarity to this.
Can I clarify your question, because I'm kind of lost? You wanted to see if we could do an entire city study?
Yep.
So we can figure out which areas are.
So we can prioritize, exactly.
Yeah, a master sewer study.
Right, because what I'm.
I was making sure I was, because I wasn't following, so if I wasn't following, then maybe others weren't.
No, that's what I'm saying because again, it's like with our comm dev development for drainage, et cetera, it should be compared across the city, okay? And whereas we're talking about hypothetical people moving into the east side at some point over the next 25 years, we have real people living in areas of Midwest City that I will guarantee you that the sewer system and the infrastructure is overtaxed and dilapidated. So that's what I'm talking about.
Mr. Streets?
Hang on, let me, let me answer a little bit of this. So the west side, we do know we need to do a master sewer study and we talked about that during the budget session and that was a part of the sales tax extension as well is bill to have the money for capital infrastructure and things like the original square mile. And I think, Paul, this number may have came from you, I'll let you answer this in a minute, but I think there's $22 million of identified needs within the original square mile of pipe bursting, which we've tried to get federal dollars for, we didn't get any federal dollars this year, but we'll try again next year. But this came about, remember this came about because of all the development that was occurring out east and all the requests that are, that we haven't quite seen yet that they're holding, the developers are holding off on the density populations because of the sewer study. So the next question is basically, the next agenda item will be, okay, how do the other cities handle this? How do you identify the financing? Not, and that study won't be just for the east side of Midwest City. That whole concept will be for the entire city.
But that's not how the agenda item is written. It's written specifically to the east side study. It is for services to be provided by this gentleman's business for the east side group, not for the city as a whole.
And the way that it, I heard you explain it to him, please correct it, it sounds like we're doing this service for future developers and almost using public tax dollars to assist them with their development projects and lift my part of town northeast side out too.
I think we should do an entire city study. I have no problem with that and I think it's probably needed.
Well, the point I'm making is the financial study is how other cities are dealing with these capital infrastructure. It's really not specific, this is $30 million. We nowhere have $30 million. There is no way we can go allow 2,000 houses to be built. We are at capacity, okay? Where we're at right now. So we need to look at how other cities are managing these long-term capital projects and how we get the main lines to the developments and how we rehab the system that we have. So I think it's all inclusive. I don't think we're. So I think it's all-inclusive, I, I don't think we're asking just for east side, how do we come up with this $30 million? That's really not the point that we're trying to make in the next request. It is how we study the, this is what these guys do all over the country. How do they finance these? How, how, how much should be the public sector involvement, how much private sector involvement? Some cities don't put any money into capital, they make the developer develop the whole thing. Most cities do some sort of private-public partnerships. So, anyway, that, that's what that request really is.
But would it be cheaper, and that might be to you, instead of piecemealing it, because the next request is for $46,000 to do the east side sewer sanitary, sanitary sewer infrastructure study? Would it not be cheaper just to do it all at once? It would be more expensive, but instead of piecemealing sections of it, long-term, would it not be cheaper to do it all at once? Does that make sense? Instead of, instead of doing four different sections and paying 50 grand four times, we better off pay 175 once, and I'm making those numbers up.
Okay.
Unless I misunderstand, and I'll let the consultants answer this question, unless I misunderstand, you're just studying, you're not really studying the 30 million, you're studying the, the, the structure, the financial structure, that other cities are dealing with this kind of growth.
We, we are studying the structure that's in place with other cities, with how you're handling things. You're kinda both right, in my, from my perspective, of we are focusing how to fund that $30 million number with this first study, and that would lead to then additional information. There is a cost of scale of doing the whole city, you really need to know, to answer her question, you really need to know what's going on with the whole city, to find that really big list of projects that's, that needs to be financed, to really ultimately tell you what is...
So, does the economy scale, or do we do it all at once, and we process that, and we have a little here, a little there?
It's, it's probably miniscule.
Maybe what we should do is bring this, we can not, take no action on the next agenda item.
Well, how about we give their Public Works Director a chance to address?
Tim. We can take no action on the next item and let them come back and clarify what they, what they would do, so it's more holistic, because that was never the goal, just to make it about this 30 million, it was about, how are the other cities doing this?
Go for it.
Now, the sewer, master sewer study is a whole different thing.
Yeah, and, and they don't need me to speak for them, but I think I can interpret. They want new development, but they don't want us to overlook the fact that we already have 57,000 people that live here that we need to take care of first.
No, I get it.
And the other piece of it is, we don't want public tax dollars utilized to pay for the whole cost, if there is an incentive for developers to also have to invest 20...
Well, it's really not an incentive situation, it's more of a, a, what a cost share looks like. I mean, we're gonna take trunk lines places, they're gonna, they go build a development, that's on them, they gotta build out the infrastructure, it's just where are they gonna draw the water into, the dirty water.
Can I say a couple things?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
So, I will tell you that, that I appreciate the questions, this is important to bring these things, these things to light. As Tim knows, and City Manager's Office and the Engineering Division know, I've been beating, I've been on my soapbox for a long time complaining about the fact, we've got a lot of, a lot of things underground that need attention, that we really, nobody, everybody takes for granted. You're right, there is a lot of things that need to be done in the original mile, but right now, in the original mile, we're not at a situation where we've, we're at or exceeded capacity for any of the sewer, we have aging infrastructure. What we're talking about on the east side of town is a situation, we are at or exceeding capacity in several places, that, in other words, we can't add even 10 houses. And we asked, I'll just tell you that I was, we started this, Public Works actually came to Engineering and said, "Look, I know that you're reviewing, that they've come in for a permit, no mas, we can't, we can't take it." And the important thing, I think, to remember, to your point, is that if the city were to have to make these improvements on the east side of town, that would be borne on the backs of all of our taxpayers, all of the utility rate payers. What they're trying to do is help us understand if there's a way to help make sure that some of that cost is put on the developers and builders who would like to develop that property. In other words, we, the city staff, don't believe that it's the responsibility of utility rate payers in the entire city to subsidize those improvements. Freeza Nichols is here, the study they're talking about is to help us say, okay, are there ways to put together the funding for that that isn't funded by utility rate payers specifically? And to your point, we've already, just so you know, sewer master plan for the entire city has been in the works for months. We're working behind the scenes, City Manager's Office with their help, we're looking to procure funding, partial funding to help fund that, there's money in the budget to do that, because we realize, as staff, both Engineering and Public Works, that we need to evaluate what's underground, we need to evaluate what's, because let's face it, if the original mile, just as a guesstimate, was $22 million for pipe bursting, what do you think the total figure for the entire city's gonna be? As I told Tim when we were in a meeting upstairs, when Freeza Nichols came and presented this the first time, I said, "I'm, I'm gonna tell you right now, that the number that they just showed you, which is a big number, that's a lot of zeros, I'm surprised nobody said, 'Hey, is that millions of dollars?'" Like, most people, I'm surprised, that would have been the first question I asked. I'll just tell you right now, the west side of town will be two or three times that number at a minimum. So, just realize that this is the first. Ultimately, the master plan is what we need in order to make informed decisions. This particular piece, unless I'm misrepresenting it, is primarily so that we know what steps to take so that utility rate payers aren't bearing the entire cost, and we can plan it.
Right, and I appreciate that, and I know that there's been discussion about doing a master sewer study, and I get that. However, I'm a little confused now on three different points. One, you just said there's money in the budget to do the master sewer plan.
To help matching funds, we don't have all the money.
There we go, okay. Because that was inconsistent with what you had just said about waiting to try to get the tax basis renewed to put the money towards community development projects.
We need help, we can't fund it all in one year.
Sorry, that's why I was, I was a little confused, okay? Got that. Okay, number, the next number, number two, which was originally my number one, which is why it's stuck in my head, okay? I, I'm curious, and how do you know that we're not at capacity in the original mile or otherwise? Because they've studied this particular section on the east side, is that just based on the flow that goes through it, Paul?
We told, we told them to begin with that it was at capacity. All they did was verify what we knew from field data. When you have lift stations that are only supposed to run six to eight hours, and they're running 20 hours a day?
Okay, right.
That's, that's way beyond your capacity. You do not want them running that long, because if it fails, you have no place for the sewer to go.
Right.
The other additional item for us is, we had surveyed the infrastructure, and we knew that many of the lines were either full or nearly full, meaning there was no place to put the sewer.
Right.
Those pinch points are things that were identified by Freeza Nichols. And again, I wanna point out, it, it was because we said, "Look, that system, please, don't put anything else out there," and we were kinda the pinch point for that. So, I'm not gonna own it all, I'm just gonna tell you that we, we said there's no way, we can't do it, so.
Okay, so now, let me back the bus up just a little bit.
Are we under it? I don't wanna be backed over.
No.
Okay.
No, no. So, the proposal in item number two was for, Reed, you misquoted that, it was $71,776. And it's described as, you know, can, discussion, consideration, possible action of approving Amendment Number Two for professional services with Freeza and Nichols, Inc. in that amount, $71,776 to provide services in support of the east side sanitary sewer study. Now, Mr. City Manager, you're talking about taking no action on this item, but my memory serves, if we take no action, it comes back just the way it was. Whereas, I think we need to...
No, it's table, that's if we table.
Sorry, my bad, okay. My point was, I think we need to either edit this on the fly to make this a broader scope item, in terms of, we'll spend this money, but what we're asking of Freeza Nichols is for them to give us advice on the ability to do a public-private partnership universally, wherever we want to in the city, not specifically just to the east side $30 million, because I think we need to pay, and if it's a little higher rate because it's broader than that, I think we need to pay what we need to pay in order to get the advice as to how do we plan for all of these multimillion-dollar projects. I'm not trying to fraught expansion or development in the east side, okay? And I don't want those people having sewage backing up in their homes, just like I don't want it anyplace else in the city of Midwest City universally. So that's why I'm asking, like, if we could make this a broader scope, and whether that means we just, Mr. City Attorney, do the revisions to this item tonight, to the extent that we could...
My preference, my preference would be not to try to do it on the fly, but to take no action, and give it, and give it the just concern that it needs, and make sure we're hitting everything. When we do things on the fly, at times, we end up in a situation where we miss something, and I would prefer...
Like the fly in the ointment?
Like the fly in the ointment.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure the scope is clarified. I agree with Tom, the scope's clarified, and they know what they're doing.
And in fairness, I'm speaking for myself, but like, maybe that's not well of the whole capital, but...
Well, let me ask a couple questions, I think we're comparing apples and oranges. This initial study on the east side was to either allow us or slow us down on future growth and development out east. Secondly, is to how to finance that. Now, that's the second part of this. We already know we're at capacity, any further growth. So this gives us the ability to take action in reference to that, and then allow them to show us how to finance not only just the east side, but the entire city.
Right, that's not the way that I was...
No.
Can, can I, I, I do wanna echo what the mayor just said, that what they find out in reference to the east side study, what they're going to do, and this is the next item, I realize, but the, what they're going to do is compare us to other comparable cities and see what they're financing. And that's in terms of development, not necessarily location to the east side. It's as simple as saying, is it $30 million or $200 million, but the, the framework is still going to be the same, and...
Would it be different from an undeveloped area, putting the infrastructure in versus developed area, like the original mile, would the concept be different?
If it's pure development, saying at the impact fee or subdivision plat fee, it could apply to everywhere. So it doesn't matter if it's...
So it wouldn't make a difference if we were to study, or what their, the professional services was being done for this area out east, or what she's talking about in the original mile? The concept would still be there, in the, in the, the way it could be financed, and the way it could be written, it could be done the same way, correct?
The information that will be gathered from this study can be replicated across the city.
Well, I agree with Susan, and I think, and with what the, well, everybody, I think they're saying the same thing, bring it back the next time, just bring it back with the understanding that it all beyond that.
Let's, uh, let's get clarity on these two items, we're, we're mixing two agenda items.
Yes, sir, I know.
So, what I would like to do is entertain a motion to accept the study as presented from my, uh, Agenda Item Number Two.
Motion to accept the Agenda Item.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Now, move to item number three.
Just take no action.
Move to table?
It has, uh...
Can't table.
It has been suggested that we take no action and bring it back at a later date. Chair, entertain a motion to indicate that. Or do I have to?
Uh, yeah, you can do that.
Okay, well, we'll take no action on number three. Correct? Are we good?
There's no motion that you can make to take no action. That's correct.
That is correct, we're, the City Council's just making a determination to take no action, pass over this one, and then it can be brought back in a different, same or different form at a later date.
So I'm to assume we're going to rewrite this RFP and give it back, and give it a bigger scope?
It'll be at the next council meeting, August council meeting.
And just so you know, this is an amendment to the current contract we have with them, so it'll be a change in that amendment to the current contract we have with them, that the City Council approved several months ago, prior to the study being undertaken.
And what's the scope of this gonna be?
We're gonna look at the overall financing of not just new improvements, but current, current improvements to the system overall.
Can, can I?
Okay. All right, now we got that clear as mud, let's move on to number four.
Point of personal privilege, point of personal privilege, could we have a five-minute recess, please?
Yes, ma'am, five-minute recess. Everybody lighten up a little bit here. Lighten up, pardon. Where were we?
Item number four.
Item number four, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2149, public hearing discussion consideration of possible action of approval of the replat of all lots three and four in block one of Friendly Acres addition, being more particularly described as follows, commencing at the northwest corner, the northwest quarter of section five, township 11, north range one, west Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma.
This item, I'm sorry. This item is a request to approve a replat of all, of lots three and four in block one of Friendly Acres. This would subdivide the parcel into nine lots, eight buildable lots, and one lot used for common area. There are currently no structures on the lot. If approved, all development standards and regulations for single-family detached district must be observed. The area of request is located in the east side collection area currently under evaluation. The applicant has been advised that the city has this area under evaluation and that the impacts of further developments are unknown. Impacts found by the study will also need careful consideration as to the funding mechanisms and related proposed developments. The applicant, Mr. Brian Funderberg, was present at planning commission and addressed the commission. Both state and local public requirements were met. At the time of this writing, staff has received two comments from surrounding property owners. Both are in favor of the proposal. One of the surrounding owners wanted to express the mailbox situation for the west side of street. Residents on the west side had erected mailboxes on their properties. The post office told them they would not deliver mail on west side, so they require the residents to put mailboxes on east side of the street. The resident calling in is concerned with their mail not getting delivered because the applicant will have to take them down for his proposed development. Planning commission recommended approval of this item. Action is at the discretion of the council. Um, I'd also like to add the applicant initially started this process, he met with staff last October, put his first application in December, and then April was told he had to do a different application, and then that's when he was advised of the sewer study. So, he is in that affected basin of the sewer study prior to this, but he did start his process in December. I have not. That would be an engineering question.
So, we advised the applicant that this development would be in there, and we don't know to the extent of the impacts of the houses. We also worry about the precedence that what is eight houses could be 200 houses. And I would defer to Don to talk about the legal aspects of that.
Part of what Mr. Bundy just related to is depending on what the city council decides to do moving forward in future city council meetings, approval of any kind of development, no matter how large or how small, could run into some legal issues. If it's just based strictly on, eight's going to have less of a impact than 200 is. That's really not a basis for making that kind of distinction under the law. So, my recommendation and advice would be to be very careful moving forward on any of these types of issues within the basin in question until such time as the city council makes certain determinations as to how it wishes to proceed concerning development in the basin.
So, what I heard you say is how we treat three, four, eight houses is the exact same way we'd have to treat 100, 200, or 300?
At, at least at this moment in time, yes, that is correct. Unless there is a, a, what we would call in the law, rational basis for changing up. To give you an example, if the city council had at one time made a determination that senior living was at an all-time low and really needed to be expanded, and these houses were strictly for senior living, that could be a rational basis for allowing this to occur. Obviously, none of that has been done yet, but that's just a, kind of an example of what you would be looking at. But just saying, we're going to do eight and not do 200, doesn't pass that kind of muster.
So, since we're not exactly sure where we're going after the study or what needs to be done, would we be best to just table this until we figure that out later on down the road?
Uh, it can be tabled. Uh, I will tell you that under city ordinance, there is a 60-day window in which the city council must take action. If it fails to take action within that 60-day window, then it's deemed approved. Um, the, uh, and that's 60 days after the planning commission hearing. The planning commission hearing and decision was on July 5th, correct?
July 5th, yes, sir.
Which would then set it at, with 31 days in July and August, set it at September 3rd. That being a Sunday and Monday being a holiday, that would make the decision, has to be made on or before December 5th. Obviously, we do have a city council meeting between now and then.
But the applicant can waive the time?
The applicant can waive that time if the applicant so chooses.
Is the applicant present tonight?
Yes, applicant and his engineer are both present.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything about this particular item to come forward? Will applicant come forward, please?
I have a question. Um, so, bear with me, and this may be coming to the applicant. So, given what we're dealing with, with the sewer issues, like, so what is related to this proposal? Is it all just to tie in to city sewer and therefore increase the, what's the word I'm looking for? Not use, but the.
Capacity.
Capacity, thank you, sorry. Um, on the current sewer system that we've been discussing earlier tonight?
That this, the eight houses are previously undeveloped land, so these eight houses will be eight additional houses that are served by that lift station in question. I, I don't know if it's the one that does 20 hours a day, but it's one that serves the whole entire basin.
Applicant?
Ryan Funderberg with Sycamore Custom Homes. Just a little background, we had a pre-development meeting in October of '22 to discuss, at that time, a replat of a platted piece of parcel. We were told at that time, we would not have to go through planning or city council. It was just a plat, a replat of the current plat. So, we got our engineer, got all the work done. Then we come back in December and we're told, no, you have to go through city council and do the whole process. Fine, turned everything in. Then I think it was maybe March, we were told again, well, we reviewed it, no, it's just a replat. You don't have to do that. So, then we go back and turn everything in again. So, now we're at, you know, going on 10 months of this whole process, which has just been a nightmare. I mean, I've dealt with Choctaw, Oklahoma City, other cities, and it's just been a roller coaster the whole time, so.
As a developer with a lift station running 20 hours a day, do you not have any worries?
I'm not a engineer, no, so.
But as a developer, you build homes. Wouldn't you have any worries building homes on a place that we've just identified might have issues with flushing the toilet?
Well, yeah, we can go in hypotheticals and mics, but.
We just had a study that said it's not relatively hypothetical. I'm just, so, okay.
Well, and, and another concern, I was not notified of the study via email until April. So, the pre-development meeting would have been nice, or someone would have said, hey, we're running into some issues. Cause I don't think this probably happened in the last year. I'm sure this has been coming on. So, I feel like we turned everything in, we should have actually already been approved or not even have to go through the city council process. And I understand that's a whole different thing, but.
Mr. Bundy, can you speak to these concerns by the applicant?
Yes, I, um, so, the sewer study started in July. The pre-application was attended by city engineer and I believe it's my.
I was there.
Okay. But essentially, actually even before the pre-development meeting, there's been a lot of turnover in staff. Um, and so, that was a lot of the reason for the confusion. The ultimate decision to do the replat was, although not timely, was more efficient than what he was told in the time between December and, and March, I suppose. Um, so, yes, the information was not timely. And, and I apologize. He has been nothing but courteous to us, and, and I understand his frustration.
So, is it accurate to say that this modder is not something that could just be replatted and that needs to be before us?
So, the replat was done away with when we did the subdivision ordinance update in January. And we, we looked back and since he applied before January, we, we allowed the replat, which is one council action. Then he does the improvements, and then he can file without council action and build his houses. So, we've done, since done away with the replat, so he will be the last replat that we, that we expect.
Okay, sorry, I'm a little sidetracked, but, um, obviously not quite grasping. So, do we have to hear this tonight, or is he entitled since he filed before he changed the subdivision regulations, the suspension he got, to go ahead and just get his replat and receive the sale, or?
No, our, our previ, our old replat ordinances, which is what Mr.
Funderberg.
Thank you, Mr. Funderberg, is working under, requires this one city council. It does not have to come back before city council as many of the other projects would, under the new process. This only takes this one action by the city council to go through the, this process. Uh, since he started back in October, the replat ordinances were in place, so he's allowed to work under those.
Okay, can I, can you have one more?
Sure.
Sorry. Um, I'm a little confused by your prior statement about the eight houses versus the 200 houses. Because, um, in my logical mind, the burden of eight houses versus the burden of 200 houses or open-ended development, where it's not specified exactly how many structures versus, you know, going to have its own as stable family residential and whatever they can stick in that space consistently, apartments and so forth, they can report. I'm, I'm struggling with that type of thing. So, is there not a, a logical differentiation that could be made in terms of us allowing this request with a specified eight houses as opposed to taking something that's open-ended that is going to be much more, um, on this, that's why.
With the information I have today, based on the information from the study, I don't, I can't say that that is a possibility. Because if you, if this eight houses go through, then any other development at eight, at eight houses or less would also have to fall within that same rubric. Giving that, that basically can open the door up to anything. Beyond that, then, is eight where we're drawing the line. And why are we drawing the line at eight and not 10, not 12, not 14? That appears to be somewhat arbitrary, um, given the information in the study. Now, if the study were to come back and say, uh, you know, if you can do 10 eight-house developments and that won't harm the capacity, then that's something that could be considered, but we don't have that information before us here today. So, as of right now, given the information that we have, I, I would have to say, it would be very, if we open the door on eight here, we're opening the door across the board for at least eight. And if, and if we're drawing the line at eight, I don't know how that is not an arbitrary line being drawn versus 10, versus 12, versus 14.
Let me ask you this. If, in fact, they study this and they say, or our contractor comes back and says, okay, eight houses will be all right, but we can't go any further. Does that draw a line in the sand for us?
It depends on how the contract, on how our consultant says those eight houses. Is it one eight-house development, or is it every eight-house development? I don't know the answer to that question right now. Um, and that's something that, you know, if that's something that the city wants to look at through the consultant, that's something that would have to be contracted with the consultant to take a look at. I can't.
The consultant talks to her, is he?
It would be my suggestion to the council. And sir, first off, let me apologize for any conundrum that we've got you into.
Well, on, as I conclude, with the city attorney talking about future, well, why can't I go back and say, well, last year you approved 200 houses? That's a precedent. You can draw the line in the sand, I would think, now with your planning that, and when that comes through the door, hey, just let you know, we're on hold right now.
Yes, sir.
But here I am midstream to the 10-yard line trying to finish, and I'm getting sucker punched.
Yes, sir.
So, I, I, I'm not going to turn you, but I feel like if we're to this point, it's different than if I walk in tomorrow and start a whole new process to put in a subdivision.
I fully agree.
Mayor, can I, can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
So, if we were to prove this tonight for you, when would you start building? And would you start building all eight of those?
No, there'll be two a year.
Two a year.
Process, yeah. And it'll take, you know, three or four months to get the road. We have to widen the road. We have to put carbon gutter. We have to put detention. It's.
It's going to take a while then. So, it's not something that you're going to be able to, you're going to build eight, and it's going to be this year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Brandon, how long do you think, and this might be an unfair question, how long do you think it would take the consultant to be able to say, in this area, we are comfortable with developments of X number of houses or less, and that will not, in our opinion, mess things up, which is not the correct term?
No, I, I understand where you're going, though. Saying that you can put X number of houses in this basin, essentially, is what you're saying. And I think the consultant could do that. There would have to be some, um, some, some numbers in there because theoretical house isn't every house. in there, because theoretical house isn't every house. But what I worry about if we do that, is that, and I think the eight houses would fall under that, but what you're going to do is, is going to have a race, and you're going to have, you're going to have developers come to us tomorrow, they're watching this right now, and they would say, well, they have a four hundred house meter, and it's going to start going down. And so you're going to see maybe a planning commission, a city council meeting, where there's enough development that's going to go over that four hundred, so then, what do you do? Do you do the ones that are first, and then stop, and so?
Well, can we, could we not take no action on this, see if they can get everything to us in a month, because we have until the fifth of September, our next meeting is the twenty-sixth, second of August, and make a very strong statement that if we were to approve this, guys, on the twenty-second, that we're going to put a moratorium on any other development going forward, until we actually have the full length of the study in that basin?
Timber Ridge Point, right now, has got cleared land, the builder is going to start putting houses in that area, and to the tune of, yeah, to the tune of probably another, I hate to say it, hundred and fifty houses. So we've got a gentleman here that's done everything that he's been asked to do, he's going to do two a year, he could do all eight, but is that going to make a difference? I mean, I hate to turn down a builder, any builder, that's going to build quality homes and put people in it, we've had this issue, and we're going to continue to have this issue.
But this is an issue that's been identified, and as Don says, it's not us approving this eight, it's us approving this eight, and it becomes two hundred, that we legally don't have a choice but to. I have to say that I feel, since we have an identified issue, that I don't care how many houses you build, two, eight, eight hundred, if you can't flush the toilets, they're useless and they're worthless.
Okay, let me jump in here real quick, I had a sidebar conversation with the city attorney, and I want to make a suggestion in this regard, okay? I'm suggesting that we table this item, let it come back at the next city council meeting, when we are supposed to revisit the issue about the sewer study and information, and allow the city attorney to take a look at a couple of questions, including, like, it seems to me, based upon everything the applicant has been through, that, you know, it's possible that this item could have been approved before the results of the sewer study came in, type of thing, and so therefore, you know, can we accept it and make almost an exception based upon the fact that it was already pending before the results came in from the sewer study? Don respectfully, I'm going to let him speak for himself, but doesn't truly know the answer to that, but would be willing to look at that if the city manager would so authorize, in order to get an idea, because we're not going to need to just answer this for this applicant, but we are going to need to answer this for the future, and like, the issue that you're raising, Councilman Reed, on a moratorium on builds until we can get something done with the sewer system, I mean, there's several issues, so like, if we could give Don a chance to look at those and better inform us, again, I certainly feel sympathetic, empathetic for the applicant, that he's been through all of these issues and trying to get this built, and we don't want to discourage builders in Midwest City whenever we can, you know, possibly assist with this. So I think if we just allowed it to pass for thirty days, and let Don take a look at the issues surrounding this, he could better inform us, and we can make a more informed decision.
Well, I would even clarify that, and request that engineering come back with a clear line of delineation for us next council meeting, so we can clear this up for him and moving forward.
And on another note, this is probably a question for the attorney, but I was received before, where I was told that we have to go through city council before construction, my plans have a stamp released for construction and signed in, I think, April or May, and then, it was a week later when we set up to have a pre-construction meeting, that I was then informed, no, you can't start.
We're going to get you a resolution, I promise you.
Okay.
And...
I'm going to move to...
And just saying, I will take that into account, too, and ask for them to submit me at least the page of the plans that show that they've been stamped.
And once again, and once again, we apologize.
I'm going to move to table this item, and ask that we proceed as discussed herein, with the authorization of the city manager, to direct staff to do things that have been requested this evening.
Second?
Yes, I guess, thank you.
And thank you for coming, sir, we appreciate you.
Motion to second the table.
I get it. I do have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And I have to abstain on that, because since I was on the planning commission at the time that that went in front.
Thank you, Mr. Dawkins, we appreciate it. We need to proceed with a roll call vote, Ms. City Clerk.
On it, Mayor.
Hmm?
Yes, I'll do that for you. Aides?
Yes.
Burn?
Yes, Ms. Sir.
Dawkins is abstaining. Reed?
Yes.
Banna?
Yes.
Favors?
No.
Dukes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, PC twenty-one forty-two, Mr. Lyon.
Public hearing discussion, consideration of possible action of resolution for a special permit used to allow the use of a group care facility is defined in four point three one, point one four, found in the City of Midwest City's Code of Ordinances for the property described as a part of the southeast quarter of section twenty-seven, township twelve, north range, two west of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, known as one oh six Michael Drive. Ms. Ritchie.
Thank you. Owner and occupant, Ms. Athena Parker, seeks to obtain a special use permit with the intent of providing personal care for seniors within her approximately twenty-two hundred square-foot single-family home. She proposes housing and caring for up to six non-related individuals. Should this application win approval, City of Midwest City Code of Ordinances, section five point nine point one, also requires city licensing in addition to any necessary state licensing. Staff is apprehensive about the likelihood the proposed use will create additional traffic not customary to the R six district, in addition to a potential lack of parking for their proposed use. These concerns were echoed by planning commissioners at the July fifth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Ms. Parker countered by stating her clientele will not own cars or drive, and the neighboring vacant lot she owns jointly with her husband, Joey Parker, could accommodate overflow parking for visitors during special events. The undeveloped, approximately seventy-four hundred square-foot lot to the east, identified as Lot twenty-four, Block nine, Ridgeview Heights, Repot Edition, is on a separate deed. It was not described on Ms. Parker's special use permit application, and there was no mention of it in our public notice. Parking is considered accessory in the R six zoning district, so auxiliary parking could not be considered as part of this application unless the lots were combined on one deed, and we restarted the application process. Midwest City resident, Mr. P. Smith, and former Word Five Councilwoman, Christine Price Allen, appeared at the commission to speak in opposition of this special use permit. Both felt the use was incompatible with the neighborhood. In a six-to-one vote, planning commission recommended denial of the item with Commissioner Hinton dissenting. Action is at the discretion of the council.
This is a public hearing, does anyone have anything to bring forward, counsel, on this particular item?
Mr. Mayor, I think there are a couple of people who signed up to want to speak on this.
Hello, my name is Athena Parker, I do have a question, you said there were multiple people?
Ma'am, ma'am, can you please state your name and address?
Athena, A-T-H-E-N-A, last name is Parker, P-A-R-K-E-R. I reside, and I'm the owner of one zero six West Michael Drive, Midwest City, Oklahoma, seven three one one zero. This is my husband, Joey Parker. You said there were multiple people that had complained at the last meeting?
Um, two.
Who were they?
Uh, Mr. P. Smith and Ms. Price Allen.
Okay, only one person spoke up, where did the other name come from?
He was there, he was there on a different item, but Mr. Smith spoke.
Okay, all right, I just want some clarification. So I would like to open up a residential care home, a personal care home, if you will, in my residence. This care home is for people or seniors that are no longer able to care for themselves. It is an affordable option, as opposed to the big box, assisted living, retirement homes, nursing homes, or memory cares. We are, I guess, a product of those people that have had to put family members into a memory care, and the financial hardship, it's draining. That's where we are. I feel like I'm just drained from this whole experience. The zoning board just drug me around, that's where I am. I really just don't know what else to say. So if you have questions, please ask. If you don't understand what a residential care home is, it's basically just a facility, it's a personal care home, that we bring people into the home where people move in, and we help them with their ADLs. This is for people that are no longer able to cook for themselves, that no longer drive, this is for people that need assistance, taking their medication, as in queuing, or like, something, Mr. Favors, make sure you take your shower for the day. Mr. Dawkins, make sure that you eat all your food, that type of thing, this is not a nursing facility, I don't do any nursing care. This is my passion, this is my purpose, this is my calling, I love what I do. And I understand, thank you, and I understand that there is some concern regarding traffic. I have a two-car garage, I have a four-car driveway, I don't understand that question, I don't understand that concern. It would be no different than if it were a home daycare, and parents are coming in and out to pick up their children. I don't understand why there is a concern for traffic, if it's a holiday, it would be no different than my family coming to my home, and parking in driveway or on the side of the street. I have a large family. The person that has voiced her concern lives on a completely different street than what I do. I don't understand, I need some clarification, I need some something here. I just want to offer seniors an affordable option, a safe option. There are a lot of people that cannot afford to move into memory cares, into nursing homes. This is an option, this is an affordable option, this is a great option.
Yes, ma'am, your goal is admirable, I don't think anybody would disagree with that. Unfortunately, the overall public safety issue is probably the overarching reason. You've got a number of people, there's fire concerns, there's all kinds of other concerns, and I hope you understand that.
I do, and that is the reason why the State of Oklahoma have safeguards in place. I have to have a survey from the fire marshal, I have to have plumbing inspections, I have to have electrical inspections, the State of Oklahoma has to come out. There are multiple steps that I have to take and go through, before I can just say, hey, I'm open for business. This is not something that you just advertise the day after I get approval and say, I'm open for business, that is not what this is, I have to safeguard my home, I have to make modifications to my bathroom, bathrooms, and I'm willing to do that, I'm willing to put in an extra driveway if I have to.
Ms. Parker, do you currently reside in the home that...
I do.
...is going to be opening up? Okay, thank you.
How many bedrooms is the home?
We have six bedrooms.
One of my issues is parking, and I understand that you have got a property next door, but by the way, the law is stated here, it's not even something that we can really take into account, because it needs to be on the same deed. So if you have six people, and you're there, and your husband's there, and your six people are there, and each of those six people have a guess, where do they park? And that's, and you mentioned the holidays, holidays happen four or five times a year, but people going to see their parents happen quite often. So I have a big issue with, I have a big issue with parking, and also, I kind of, you're turning a residential house in the middle of a neighborhood into a business, which most people don't want a business in the middle of their residential neighborhood.
I respect that, I do, I respect that.
And I know, I heard you say that you have to have, like, fire marshals and plumbing inspectors come in, but for the type of business you're suggesting here, you're not required to have any type of licensing?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Department, you are?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you elaborate what those licenses?
Um, in order to apply for the license from the State of Oklahoma, I have to be rezoned first, that's the first step. And once I've been rezoned, then the fire marshal will come out and do their inspection. Plumbers come out and do their inspections, electricians will come out and do their inspections. But all those things won't take place until I have done my part as far as safeguarding the home, making sure that my bathrooms are compliant. And then I also, as far as my licensing, I would need to be licensed as an administrator by the State of Oklahoma.
Can I ask you a legal question, Don? So even if we approved this tonight, the way it sits, when the fire marshal and everybody goes out, they look at the number of parking spaces that are available, and this house wouldn't have the parking spaces. So they wouldn't probably even be able to pass any inspections to be able to go forward.
Parking would depend on each jurisdiction, using that term, whether it's the fire marshal, whether it's plumbing code, electrical code, they would look at their specific items, they may or may not look at parking. So I, you know, I don't know whether parking is an issue for each and every one of them. I do have one question, if I can ask.
Absolutely.
Have you, have you reached out to the Oklahoma State Department of Health at all?
In regards to...
Licensure.
I have the printout of what I need to do, I've looked it over, but frontwards and backwards.
Okay, just so you're, just so you're aware, and I know everybody here is aware, I'm the former general counsel of the State Department of Health, what she is describing is a residential care facility, and you, Ms. Banna, you kind of asked this question, that is required to be licensed by the state under their statutory and regulatory requirements. I do, so I do know that there's at least that licensure for this type of residential care facility, and it is something that is licensed by the Department of Health, there are multitudes of these throughout the state, so I, but I was just curious as to whether they had approached them for that license.
Can I ask you a follow-up question?
I'll try my best.
And that's, this is part of my history that I carry, I've been involved in some group homes that have not necessarily met the standards, would it be your expectation, because God knows, we need more developmental disability housing, we need more group homes in our community, but we also want to make sure that residents are going to be placed in a safe environment...
Absolutely.
...that is regulated and that is oversighted by appropriate entities. Would a health department license, would that require them to come out and inspect the facility?
Yes, they have, they have routine, they have inspectors that, a long-term, they're under a rubric called long-term care within the State Department of Health, and they do have a set of inspectors who come out and look at those. Now, for residential care, unlike with nursing homes, nursing homes have a federal requirement, and there are federal requirements, residential cares don't have that federal requirement, they only have state requirements that they have to meet, but yes, there are inspectors who come out and inspect those on a annual, maybe a once-every-eighteen-month-type basis, depending on how the workload's going and employment's going.
Thank you so much.
It is a yearly, it is a yearly inspection, however, I will be given a temporary license to begin with, and then they will come out within three and six months to give me permanent license.
And we do have a two-car garage, both of us, some people don't use their garage for the cars, but we do, and we have a four-car driveway, so, and we can regulate the times of visits on the parking, we will regulate that, we just don't say, six people can come park, we can regulate visitation times.
Okay, I have a question, that I'm just not getting passed. I see in the executive summary, and based upon my knowledge, skill, training, and experience, I have understanding of these issues, okay? It specifies, you have to comply with city licensing requirements, you have to comply with state licensing requirements, okay? What am I missing with regard to this parking requirement? I mean, other than the concern of burdening the neighborhood with cars parking in the street, where is it that there is a requisite parking requirement? What am I missing? Emily, can you help me? Or anybody?
I would recommend looking at page three of twenty-one forty-two, on the criteria for special permit approval, I would look at item number four.
Just enlighten me, would you?
Uh huh. Whether the, so there's criteria for special permit approval, whether the proposed use shall not generate pedestrian or vehicular traffic that is hazardous or in conflict with the existing and anticipated traffic in the neighborhood.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that. But where is there a specific requirement that says, okay, to operate a residential care home, you have to have X parking spaces available? Like when we do commercial developments, we went through a huge fight over Dollar General or Family Dollar, one of them, remember, where there was an issue with the parking, and it was like, well, how many parking spots? Like, and I think we ended up giving them a exemption because it just made no sense. So where is the requirement? Because I'm just going to speak to this also from this issue really quickly, okay? The type of clientele that this couple is looking to place in the residential care facility often are folks who could be in a community setting if they had certain assistance available to them versus being in a nursing home, okay? But like, you know, they have issues with remembering to take their medication, as the applicant was alluding to, they have issues with, you know, being in a safe environment, making sure they eat, certain things of that nature. So they could not be in a nursing home, and they could be in a house if they had certain assistance, okay? And unfortunately, the reality of it is, the clientele that she's likely attracting to her residential care facility, if approved, are folks who do not have family members who are there to take care of them. I see this all the time, okay? We have people that they could not be in the nursing home, but they are because there's nobody else. I deal with this in my full-time job all the time, okay? And so the sad reality of this, in my opinion, this parking issue and the burden to the street traffic is insignificant because the type of clientele that she's going to attract are people who aren't regularly, unfortunately, going to have family members visiting them. So I don't believe that it's going to be overly burdensome.
My staff report just reflects what people have said to me and their concerns, and I'm required to address those.
No, I respect that completely, I'm just taking it from my perspective.
Okay, and just so everyone knows, what Emily is quoting here comes out of section 7.6 of the City Ordinances of the City of Midwest City. Specifically, I'm going to read a couple of these. 7.6.1A, consideration for compatibility, with consideration in to, given to setting physical features, compatibility with surrounding land uses, traffic, aesthetics, certain uses may locate in an area where they'll be compatible with existing or planned land uses. That's, and 7.6 is entitled special use permit, so I'm reading from the special use permit. And then at 7.6.3, criteria for special permit approval, the city council shall use the following criteria to evaluate a special use permit. Those include whether the proposed use shall be in harmony with the policies of the comprehensive plan, whether the proposed use shall not adversely affect the use of neighboring properties, whether the proposed use shall not generate pedestrian or vehicular traffic that is hazardous or in conflict with existing and anticipated traffic in the neighborhood, whether utility, drainage, parking, loading, signs, lighting access, and other necessary public facilities to serve the proposed use shall meet the adopted codes of the city. So those are the requirements that the city council looks at. I didn't read all of them.
Right.
But I read the ones that are kind of pertinent to this discussion here.
Right.
That is set out in the city ordinance.
And to answer your question about the regulations, I under, so, commercial, there's different things taken, and say you're a bowling alley, you have to have a spot for every five lanes, but residential doesn't have the same type of use.
Emily, did you have to make notifications to neighbors?
Yes, 300, everyone within 300 feet.
Did you get anybody back?
Yes, Ms. Allen.
Ms. Price Allen and Mr.?
There's a lady gesturing from the gallery.
Okay, there were several people that signed up to speak of this issue.
Do you have any more questions for me?
No, can I just finish my thought though, really quickly? I understand what you all are saying, and I appreciate all of that. To me, my biggest concern with this application, honestly, is the memory care aspect that you alluded to, type of thing. My father had dementia, and so I have a lot of experience with that, and I know you all were talking about, you've been through this, you know, ensuring the safety of those folks who have those types of special needs, type of thing. And I firmly believe that, given what you're going to propose in terms of the type of clientele you would propose to take into your residential care facility, that would be addressed by regulations.
Right.
Coming from the state in particular, to ensure, because the biggest risk in my head is just, and we've had it happen, for people who get outside a facility, you know, and I'm talking a nursing home, and then they're wandering the streets and, you know, et cetera. So way more than a parking question for me is just that safety, and I believe that would be addressed, and Dawn, I'm asking you to agree with me on this, I believe that would be addressed by what type of clientele she applied to take into the home, and then what the, what the requirements were on her.
Yes, there, the state does have, depending on what kind, because a memory care facility requires a different license than a residential care facility, which is more of what they've been describing, but each one of them have elopement, it's called elopement.
Yeah.
Or moving, doing that in this type of facility, and each one of them does have elopement requirements, and how you have to do locks and fire locks and things like that to secure the facility so you can minimize the chances of elopement by any resident.
So a matter of clarity, although, let's say this is true, every step along the line with fire, everybody else, she could be denied a license.
That is, that is a possibility, yes.
Okay, to kind of move this process along, we do have some people that have signed up to speak on this issue. Ms. Nolan, you still here? God bless you.
Yes.
Could you state your name and address, and I do want to remind you that you have four minutes to address council.
My name is Linda Nolan.
Oh, Nolan, I'm sorry.
Nolan, N-O-L-A-N. I'm 108 West Michael Drive, Midwest City, Oklahoma, 73110. And I stay next door to the parkers. There's no, I don't know about the parking port, I don't think there'd be a problem, and you were saying something about cars being on the street?
No ma'am, just express your thoughts.
Okay, cars being on the street, it'd be like Windsor Way in the 200 block, you know, it's like a discouraging going through there, that's bad parking. Now, they could have a barbecue or a family gathering over there, and they don't have any problem with the parking, and it's nothing that stops us, and somebody's complaining from another street when they could go down to Shady Brook from their street. So I don't know about her saying something about parking.
So are you for or against?
I'm for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Mr., or Ms. Anderson?
I'm doing fine.
Could you state your name and address, please, for me?
Patricia Y. Anderson, 112 West Michael Drive, Midwest City, Oklahoma, 73110.
What are your concerns about this issue?
I am for it. I don't see any problem with it being there. And I stay three doors down, and I don't see no parking, I don't see nothing, I'm for it.
Thank you ma'am for being here, I appreciate it. Ms. Gardner? How you doing?
I'm fine, how are you guys?
I'm good.
Oh, I'm Geraldine Gardner, and my address is 109 West Michael Drive, I'm right across the street from the parkers. The parkers are respectful and, you know, neighbors and good neighbors, and there's never no congestion in our area far as parking. Everybody has a two-car garage that can hold four cars, there's never no traffic or just going and coming, but far as parking, there's no parking on the streets because everybody has their own garage, and I'm for it.
Well, thank you ma'am for being here, appreciate it. Christine Allen?
I'd like to say that I understand.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
I know you're a former member of council.
Thank you very much.
But you do need to state your name and address.
I sure will, yes. My name is Christine Price Allen at 110 Windsor Way in that Midwest City, and so my concerns is that Michael Drive, Michael Street, and Windsor Way, it is the one, it is the two streets that are really consumed with children. I mean, it's just kids everywhere. Now, that's a problem right there, which, you know, is family. And so me and people that live on Windsor Way, when we go down Windsor Way headed west, we cannot, it's very hard to get through there because the kids is out there, it's a duplex. So you have to go, when you have to go back east and then go back to the next street, which is Michael. So with that, you know, being said for as parking and such, oh, it's going to be, it'll be a traffic problem, and then you're going to have kids that's going to be involved in this too. I see that it is really a safety, where we're trying to do one thing good, we may be causing an impact on another. And I understand that, I understand this is, you know, we feel this needed, and it's a good idea, I don't have any problem with her vision, I just think it's in the wrong place, consider what's going on. So, and not only that, as we know, and people on Michael Drive know, there has been so many incidents there, crime. We have just came to a place where it's trying to narrow down, which we had an incident, we had several shootings on Michael Drive, several. So I'm looking at safety for everyone, so we're going to have a facility where there's already a crime problem there on Michael Drive, done two deaths on there on Michael Drive, not too far from where she is living. You know, I say this, when we look at something, we think it's good, and then we look at the aftermath of things that can happen, then we have another problem. And I'm bringing this to attention to the council so we'll know exactly what we're looking at. Boys, when I go down Michael, when I turn and go east and go to Michael Drive, I can go so far, and you got kids playing basketball, these are the two congested streets, these two streets is the most congested ones. And we have had several crimes, not so much as on Windsor Way, but going down towards the duplexes. And so I want everyone to know, and all the homeowners to know, that while we doing something good, we have to look at the impact for homeowners. We have a lot of people that do a lot of renting, but then we have homeowners there, which, and what I'm speaking of, is that whenever there's a home, a living, a facility coming on board like this, it caused our property to go down because of the, you know, all of the impact that it can, that can happen. We never know what can happen. We never know who all going to be visiting to the relatives, who all's coming through there, what the traffic, we have no idea what traffic is going to come through. And I know what you all saying, that most older people, people don't, relatives, and people don't, lovers don't visit them. Well, we can't say that, because when she spoke at the planning commission last time, she said if 10 people, if they have 10 relatives that want to come over there for the holidays, she said she want to make it really big, and they all be involved and coming over. And I'm saying, well, how is this going to be? Where is these people going to park? She conveyed to the planning commission, they can park in the vacant lot that she have.
Okay, Ms. Allen, your four minutes is up, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you for, thank you for.
So I just want to say that I am a homeowner, and I do value my property, and once we open up the door, it's going to be how, I have a vacant across my street, so I guess it'd be a home assistant too. So that's what's going to happen.
Thank you.
I want to say I live in a neighborhood that does not have two-car garages, most of them have single driveways, they don't even have garages. We've got on-street parking on both sides of the street, and we managed to make that work, and when the neighbors have a party, you may be slightly inconvenienced, but it is what it is. So with, with respect to this item, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve this item.
Second. I have a motion, and I have a second for a discussion. All in favor, indicative of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carried. Okay, and it's subject to all the regulations that you just opened the door to.
What's that, that's not me?
Yes ma'am. Thank you for being here. All right.
You abstain, right?
Uh, yeah, we need to go ahead and do a roll call vote, so. I don't see any change, but go ahead.
Eads?
Yes.
Byrne?
What are we voting on? Yes.
Really?
He's got to be the first resident in the memory care center.
Dawkins? You need to make sure you have your microphone on and speak into it.
Abstained because of, on the planning commission.
Thank you. Reed?
Yes.
Banna?
Yes.
Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
Yes.
Can I ask a point of information there? I've been historically told abstain stands for a no, though, one way or another.
That's exactly true.
It would, it would be, if you're, if we had a, something above a simple majority required to pass it, it would be counted in the no section to meet something above that. If you, let's say you had to make it three-quarters, we have an emergency coming up. If you have to have a three-quarters vote, and there's an abstention, that's counted as a no towards that three-quarters, just to meet those numbers.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that works for the circumstance.
Right, if the, yeah, in other words, yeah, he could also step down from the, on a specific vote, so it's, then you're only counting as to those that are voting.
Thank you for the clarification.
Right.
Okay.
From C3 Community Commercial District, um, to C3 Community Commercial District, with a special use permit to allow for the use of drinking, of a drinking establishment, sit-down alcoholic beverages permitted as defined in 4.4.22, found in the City of Midwest City's Code of Ordinances, and a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from office retail to commercial for the property described as a part of the Southeast Quarter, Section 27, Township 12, North Range 2 West, Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma known, also known as 7901 Northeast 10th Street, Suite A209. Ms. Ritchie.
Ms. Cheryl Jackson leases Suites A208 and A209 in the Midwest Office Park, which is located on the north side of Northeast 10th Street, just west of North Midwest Boulevard. She operates a hair salon in Suite A208, where she dispenses complimentary samples of wine she makes at a state facility in Moore, Oklahoma. She seeks a special use permit for the adjacent suite, Suite A209, where she plans to serve wine and food in addition to selling bottles of wine and other merchandise. Staff from Community Development, Engineering and Construction Services, Fire Marshal's Office, and Line Maintenance on March 9th, 2023, performed a cursory inspection at the applicant's request. Unpermitted work was discovered, and Ms. Jackson was told to not proceed with further remodeling until all city permits are on hand, including a special use permit. Approval of this special use permit application will allow Ms. Jackson to proceed with filing construction documents as part of a building permit application, which would make it possible to obtain the necessary certificate of occupancy from the Engineering and Construction Services Department. She will also need to pursue appropriate licensing from our Customer Service Department in addition to state licensing from the Alcoholic Beverage Licensing Enforcement Commission. It is important to note that ABLE approval can only be granted after the city issues a formal letter of compliance, which typically follows the issuance of a permanent CO. A public hearing was held, and the applicant was reviewed at the July 5th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners inquired about Americans with Disability Act compliance, as well as potential building code issues. Ms. Jackson's suites are on the second floor of the Midwest City Office Park, which was built about twenty years before Congress approved the ADA. There is no handicapped accessible path leading to the second floor. It is also understood that proposed change of use in Suite A209 could mandate constructing firewalls and surrounding suites that are beyond the boundaries of Ms. Jackson's lease. Ms. Jackson explained to the commissioners, her customers would be tasting only with the option of purchasing full bottles of wine for consumption off-site. She questioned whether the city permits were necessary, given the fact she already held ABLE commission licensing to dispense complimentary beverages. No one spoke in opposition of this application at the public hearing, and at the time of this report, staff has received no comments regarding this case. Planning Commission voted to unanimously recommend denying Mrs. Jackson's special use permit. Following the meeting's adjournment, Ms. Jackson discussed the case with Economic Development Director Robert Coleman and myself, again questioning why his special use permit was necessary. She claimed Suite A209 was proposed as a retail space primarily for selling merchandise, namely t-shirts and hair products. The alcohol would be the least amount of her sales, and that no food would be served or sold. She compared her operations to that of a convenience store. These statements contradicted the SUP application, as well as comments made earlier during our inspection visit. Ms. Jackson also felt that her ABLE commission complimentary beverage license allowed use of both suites for her wine tasting and sales with no further permits. Director Coleman felt that a city's special use permit was in order, but that it may be wise to confer directly with ABLE to verify state licensing requirements. Coleman contacted the ABLE commission on July 10th to discuss the matter, and Lieutenant Todd Anthony responded on July 12th. He confirmed Ms. Jackson held an Oklahoma's winemaker license at a location in Moore that allowed for up to three satellite tasting locations. He said that he did not know of any prohibition against the applicant maintaining tasting rooms in adjacent suites. Lieutenant Anthony confirmed that ABLE commission licensing was only available after the city issued a letter of compliance. Furthermore, Lieutenant Anthony stated that Ms. Jackson could not simultaneously, simultaneously hold a complimentary beverage license and an Oklahoma winemaker's license. Action is at the discretion of the council.
I do have additional information for the council. This is, this is coming from the ABLE commission Captain Greg Brannum. Ms. Jackson has a winery license, but does not qualify her for a complimentary license at another business. Her winery, uh, license was obtained at a satellite tasting room license, and that location is subject to zoning requirements of municipality. Also, this afternoon at, uh, 4:35, I spoke to the commissioner, or the director of ABLE, and they are going to be contacting Ms. Jackson to surrender her current ABLE license.
With that said, do we need to just, do we even need to entertain this motion at this?
Well, we will have to deny, ma'am. And Chair, entertain a motion.
This is a public hearing, you still have to go through the-
I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring forward?
The applicant would like to speak.
Yes, ma'am, come on forward.
Number one, the winery belongs to Leonard Jackson. I'm aware that you can't have both, so I'm applying for the complimentary, which is, we already have the tasting in my barber shop, the winery is Leonard Jackson's in Moore, so it's not even the same.
Well, Ms. Jackson, first off, can you state your name and address for us, please?
Yes, Cheryl Jackson, 1417 Northeast 26th Street in Moore.
Okay. Well, according to ABLE, um, that's not true, um, and that ABLE will be contacting you to surrender your other license, so-
I've already talked to ABLE.
So, uh, well, I talked to him at 4:30 this afternoon. So, uh, with that being said, or is there anything else you'd like to add?
Well, it's not true, sir, that licenses that belong to Mr. Jackson doesn't have anything to do with me.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification. Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Abstain.
Motion carries, your, your application is denied.
Yeah. Abstain, abstention because of being on the-
Man, you're jacking everything up.
Half of the agenda was Planning Commission.
Eads.
This is a, to vote, to deny.
Yes, to deny.
Vote to deny.
Byrne.
Yes, to deny.
Dawkins.
Abstention because of Planning Commission.
Reed.
So is that to deny? I wanna be clear, to deny the-
To, your application has been denied, until, obviously, you're gonna have to jump through a whole bunch of hoops.
I don't, I'm okay.
Okay.
Mayor, just for a point of clarity for her, I, I, and please correct me if I'm misunderstanding. If you are able to resolve the issues with the state entity, which is ABLE, which is a law enforcement entity, then you can possibly reapply for this application, right?
They're gonna have to go through the same process and, and, and go through the same construction issues and everything else that's been required.
And, okay, now, uh, Mr. Fryer and Dwayne sent me an email, and said that they didn't even consider that a satellite tasting, because we don't have to taste there.
Well, okay. Let us finish our vote.
Yes. Bana.
Aye.
Favors.
Aye.
Dukes.
Okay, your, your application's been denied, so you're gonna have to come back and try again.
No problem.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to item number seven. It's been requested we take no action on item seven, PC 2143, four.
Item seven. Withdrawn eight and nine.
Eight and nine have been withdrawn. Move to number 10, 2147, Mr. Lyon.
Public hearing discussion, consideration, possible action of approval of preliminary plat of urban edge for the property described as the east half of Northeast Quarter, Southwest Quarter, the Southeast Quarter of Section 35, Township 12, North Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian, addressed as 8610 to 8620 through 8700 of East Main Street, Midwest City. Ms. Ritchie.
This item is a request for a preliminary plat for 16 total lots. There are three existing structures on the property that are included in the plat, and the applicant, Mr. Emmanuel Aquaa, is proposing to subdivide the remaining property into 13 lots for a mix of duplexes and single-family homes. And I would like to update, um, I mistyped, um, it's supposed to be 17 total lots and 14 remainder lots instead of 13, so I'd like to clarify that. But, um, Engineering and Construction Services and Planning performed their review, and applicant has satisfied all necessary revisions requested by staff. Stormwater reviewed and discovered there is a drainage bloom coming off of St. George's Way from the south on the west end that is not represented on the stormwater management plan. Stormwater manager is good with the applicant submitting an updated plan after this case is heard and prior to final plat approval. The applicant's engineer, John Doyle of Cedar Creek Consultants, was present at Planning Commission and addressed the commission. Both state and local public notification requirements were met. At the time of this writing, staff has not received any comments regarding this case. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item. Action is at the discretion of the council.
Should we wait until the amendments come through, or go ahead and take action on this?
Amendment, for this, um, he's not in the impacted sewer area of the-
No, I, I understand that, but the storm water issue-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, this, that's for the, this is, that was for the stormwater prevention plan that can be corrected administratively.
They'll just have to depict it on the-
And we're not going to create another problem for the residents down here on, on stormwater.
This is for the preliminary plats that allow star construction.
I understand that. And so, we're not gonna create any more issues for those folks. We had an issue, uh, when that was initially platted, if you recall, and we walked the area and, and saw that the developer had addressed those issues. We're not gonna address, we're not gonna create any more issues for those folks down here.
Correct. Where, where I, my hesitancy is that when development starts, there are disturbances, and they have stormwater controls, and they have a permit for that. There are storms that happen, as, as we have all been aware of in the last few weeks. I can't control whether the stormwater controls are adequate or not. When they ultimately finish construction, there will not be drainage issues with the constructed infrastructure.
That is an extremely political way to put that.
Thank you.
He's getting better at that.
Is development gonna be similar to the one on Spirit Drive and Patriot Drive?
Yes, very similar.
Different developer, but similar, right?
Yes, different developer and different engineer, but they are, are mirroring those.
The issue on this one is the drainage bloom is there, it just wasn't indicated on the preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, does anyone have anything to bring counsel on this issue?
Yes, applicant and his engineer are present.
Does he have, you have anything to add? Hearing or seeing none, Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are you gonna have to abstain from this one? Roll call vote.
Eads. Byrne.
Yes.
Dawkins.
Abstention because of Planning Commission.
Reed.
Yes, because I wasn't on the Planning Commission.
Bana.
Aye.
Favors.
Yes.
Dukes.
Yes.
Point of clarification, who was it who suggested to appoint Mr. Dawkins to the
It was I. You have an issue with that?
Oh, I'm just wondering, 'cause you keep getting frustrated, and he has to keep stating-
I was also responsible for you too, sir.
I, I'm just wondering, like, I mean, at least own it, whatever, you create the debacle.
Well, I think this I do, that you have the bad.
If I was responsible for you, I'd kick you to the curb. We do have levity up here every once in a while. Move into, uh, item number 11, PC 2148, Mr. Lyon.
Public hearing discussion, consideration of possible action approval of a final plat of the 29th and Douglas apartment described as a tract land being a part Southwest Quarter, Section 12, Township 11, North Range 2 West, Indian Meridian, Midwest City, Oklahoma. Ms. Ritchie.
Thank you. This case is for the approval of the 29th Street and Douglas Avenue apartment's final plat. The applicant has opted to submit bonds for cost of water and sewer installation instead of the initially agreed-upon letter of credit to fulfill the water and sewer requirements, which meets the provision as outlined in the Midwest City Municipal Code. The standard for review for final- The standard for review for final plots wasn't, was unable to be performed fully by staff from engineering and construction and current planning division due to the construction of public improvements being satisfied after application is accepted. The Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality has rejected both water and sewer plans submitted by the applicant. Applicant has submitted their requested revisions and is awaiting approval. Um, side note that they, we did receive the approved plans Friday, I have the copy if you all like to look. So, some of this is incorrect, 'cause the staff report was due before-
Right, we went ahead and put this on the agenda pending, so they didn't have to wait till August.
Um, so, staff would like noted again, that formal review for the submitted permits will not begin until the above requirements have been satisfied. The applicant was present at Planning Commission and addressed the commission. Two surrounding property owners addressed the commission. One asked if there will be a fence between her property and the subject property and the other is concerned with traffic down twenty-ninth Streets. Both of the surrounding property owner's concerns would have been best addressed at the rezon hearings. The final plat is the approval of the subdivision of property. Staff recommends approval now that we've received the DEQ's acceptance of revisions. At the time of this writing, staff has not received any comments regarding this case. Both state and local public notification requirements were met and action is at the discretion of the Planning Commission.
You mean the council?
I'm sorry, the council. Action's at the discretion of the city council.
This is a public hearing-
Mine is, Rick.
One thing I want to bring up, something Emily said about the property owners addressing the concerns about the fence and the border there. This applicant has been extremely open with the people over there in Orchard. They've met with them two or three times in, as far as, their, their concern is a buffer in a fence or trees, and there are a lot of mature trees on the backside of Orchard and would be the top of the CMS Willbrook develop, very mature, healthy trees that would be extremely expensive to replace. And they've assured the people that live over there in Orchard that there's gonna be a border there to keep it for two reasons, because we don't want the irrigation or the drainage system that the city has spent considerable amount of money fixing messed up and they want to leave a buffer in there, is that, is that correct? See, developers, if you want to come up and say I'm lying or telling the truth. But it has been addressed from, from day one, they've been very amicable to what the, the people over there are wanting. You can't keep, you know, the wildlife's gonna go, but the water and the buffer's been important.
Yeah, Rob Garrett, Conde Development, developer on the project. You're talking about on the north side, which I think there's a, there's already an easement up there for forty, fifty feet, thirty feet, I don't know. There's a twenty-foot easement, but there's already, we already know there's gonna be drainage work up there. So, there's, we already know there's gonna be distance there. The, the resident that had the question about the fence was actually on the west side of the property, talking about a property that I, we don't actually own.
But my point was that they've been very cooperative from the get-go, we've had community meetings, they presented it. So, it's, this is the, the final step in getting something done. And it's CMS Willbrook, they're very, very good business people in the city, in the metro area too.
Well, thank you for being here, and you're responsible for taking down the frog pond, correct?
It depends on if you're-
What did you do with the wood?
We want to know where the sign went.
Somebody stole it.
Yeah.
Is that what?
True. All right, this is a public hearing, does anyone have anything to bring forth counsel on this particular issue? Hearing or seeing none, the Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are you gonna have to reclusive yourself on this one? Okay, roll call vote.
Eads?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Dawkins? Reed?
Yes.
Bana? Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
Affirmative. Ms. Ritchie, you've- It's been your night, huh?
It has, I don't know if I call it that.
We now move to PC twenty-one fifty, public hearing, Mr. Lyon.
Public hearing discussion, consideration, possible action of an ordinance for a district and community commercial, District C-three to medium residential, medium density residential, RMD, and resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from single-family detached residential to medium density residential for the property described as a southwest corridor, section ten, Township eleven, north range two west, Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma known as two-twenty-seven West Fairchild.
Thank you. Mr. Al Salih is proposing construction of six one-bedroom, single-story, five-hundred-seventy-six square-foot residential rental units near the intersection of South Air Depot Boulevard and West Fairchild Drive. Before building plans can be submitted, the city must amend the subject property from C-three District to the RMD District with the prerequisite to approve a resolution amending the comprehensive plan from single-family detached residential to medium density residential. Mr. Salih owns the paved lot at twenty-three ninety-eight South Air Depot Boulevard, which is part of the same property. It serves as parking for the catch and tropical smoothie cafe restaurants. He plans to add spaces on the south side of this lot to ensure the development code is, is code compliant. The conceptual site plan meets the development regulations for the medium-density residential zoning district and the buil, building elevations appear to harmonize with the adjacent neighborhood. At the time of this respo, this report, staff has received one phone call from a surrounding property owner. The citizen was opposed to Mr. Salih's application alleging there were already problems from trash blowing out of the open dumpsters that serve the restaurants. The complaintant felt the proposed development will only increase the likelihood the problem will increase. Planning and zoning has since contacted the sanitation department about additional monitoring. The applicant was president, present and spoke in support of his proposal at the July fifth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission hearing. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this item seven to zero. Action is at the discretion of the council.
Okay, I'm gonna jump off on this one since it's in my ward. First and foremost, Mr. Lyon, I would ask that we ask Mr. Street staff to take a look at the trash cans that were the subject of the complaint. We've had a similar complaint across the street at the Dollar General CC's Pizza some time ago and it turned out there was a broken hinge on the lid which was allowing the dumpsters to remain open and with the wind effect through there, it was causing the trash to schedule, to scatter. So, if we could maybe take a look at that one-
Yeah, Mr. Streets will do that tomorrow.
Resolve that issue. That would be wonderful. Okay, now, let me start off with the fact that I think this is a great proposal for this area. I'm a little saddened by the fact that it's gonna be rentals, 'cause we'd love to get some more homeownership in this area, but nevertheless, we need diversity of housing and I greatly respect that. I do have a couple of questions. Is the applicant present?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you, could you step forward for a second, sir? Okay, and I also want to say that I was given a schematic early on for this, but schematics don't work real well for me, so that's why I have a couple of questions. And I have heard that there are renderings of the proposed structures that have been done. I had a conversation with a realtor, a local realtor about a week and a half ago or so that said she had seen some renderings for that. Is that, are there renderings out there, like, okay, maybe she's confused with the project area type of thing, but she was speaking favorably about them, so. Let me ask this, 'cause these are a couple of my concerns. One, you're aware and it's reflected in the executive summary that we are in the process of doing a walkability district there with the Carburetor Alley project and so forth. Now, I know a lot of the area immediately to the west and to the south essentially, because your proposal's kind of L-shaped, inverted L-shaped, is parking for the businesses that you own, Tropical Smoothie Cafe and the Catch. However, I noticed that while you're fully supportive of working with the district and, you know, building enhancement in the district there, there is no requirement for sidewalk with regard to this proposal. And I was curious about your willingness to maybe do a sidewalk tie-in that runs parallel to Fairchild, that at least connects back as far as your property proposal goes, so that there's a sidewalk walkability space coming from Air Depot and the Carburetor Alley back into the project.
Al Salih, four fifty-five South Triple X Road, Choctaw. I thought the sidewalks are requirement when you build a new building next to your property, you have to put that in.
It, not according to the executive summary, help me, Mr. Bundy.
So, for zoning, a sidewalk's not required, but for a commercial building, a sidewalk would be required.
Okay.
So, it should have been reflected in the report and I apologize for that.
Okay, and so, since we're doing this as a high-density type of thing, they will be required there, okay. And then the other thing that I wanted to ask, just because, again, you're butting up against a lot of commercial space right there is, and I don't clearly understand the schematic, is there going to be a green space that you're going to have there at all? For residents who have pets, so that they can take their pets to-
It's also a requirement that we have certain amount of green space within the complex that we have in, so.
Okay, Mr. Bundy, is that, are we in agreement with this?
I'll defer to zoning.
There will be a landscaping plan required with the submission of his building permit.
But that will include like a green space for pets type of thing? I mean, I'm not talking about trees, I'm talking literally like we need some grass space there.
Um, not necessarily, that would be on the, if he was subdividing the property, there's certain percentage of green space, but he's very accommodating to work with and I'm sure if that's one of the things you'd like to see, he'd be happy to try to work that in with his plan. But landscaping, you know, will be required, so there will have to be some type of green space, whether, but I don't know, you know, the size of how it would-
Just something that would accommodate so that pets in the area, if, if you have residents that come into the addition that there, that they have a space to take their pets to. We have a wonderful park, only a few blocks away with a dog park, but for immediate needs type of thing, just so. Again, we're investing in the commercial in there, so I want to make sure that there's not a burden there and I did-
That's why we were changing it from, we could have with a shopping center there, same way, but we decided to do that because the city, we had a meeting a year, two years ago when Kelly was here and they said they wanted to see a mix between-
Yes, mixed use.
You know, between residential and commercial, walk and work and place.
That's right.
Absolutely.
And that's why we, we're testing that actually, to see if we can do that in some other property we have, but it was state colors.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which we hope you do in time.
Right, so, um, I, I want to thank you for bringing this forward and if nobody has any other discussion-
Well, I got a couple of questions. That's a pretty tight space to be putting six places in there.
I'm, I'm very familiar with it.
Yeah, there's, you look, we have a floor here, right, it's in the-
Page seventeen.
Yeah, there's a schematic on there that shows the placement of the buildings.
And I will say he met with his design engineer with staff to work on the development regulations for RMD and the preliminary submission, submission. It does fulfill all the requirements, that we were concerned that it wasn't going to fit either and that a spud would be necessary, but they were able to accommodate everything within RMD at this point.
Little micro neighborhoods like this-
You can stuff a lot of stuff in a bag if you try, you know.
They have a term for that in the military, don't they?
Yes, they do, and I'm not gonna divulge that currently.
But micro neighborhoods are kind of the wave of the future. And this is kind of a micro neighborhood and this is kind of the whole, we don't call it an overlay, but you worked on the original square mile plan twenty-something years ago on the Planning Commission with me. And this is kind of what was envisioned for this neighborhood. Places that you can live, walk to shops, walk to restaurants, walk to bars, walk to, you know.
Walk to the university.
Yes, and this is, this is one of those things that, yes, it's small and yes, it's probably uncomfortable for most of us to think five hundred and sixty feet, square feet. But this is where the millennials are going, this is where retirees are going, it's just smaller places because they want experiences, not stuff.
Also, Mr. Reed, the, the issue is too, you know, we look at diversity of housing options type of thing. We did a joint venture with Jeff Johnson to do some lot splits on infill lots. Now, were they hugely popular? No, they have not been hugely popular, he has been able to rent them. But again, it, it is an, it, this is an, a, a small-scale project, if you will, we're talking six residences. It's right there against commercial, it makes perfect sense as opposed to something that is in the middle of a neighborhood to try to do a mixed-use purpose, in my opinion, which, you know, I objected to when that came up before.
What's your price range gonna be?
But here-
What, what's your rental gonna be, how much?
Did you miss the fact that I was still talking or did you decide to just jump off the top of me?
Yes, ma'am, I did miss it, I just wanted to get clarification, I'm sorry.
Nine hundred.
Hmm?
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred?
Yep.
Councilwoman Eads, would you like to finish your thoughts?
Go ahead, Ms. Eads.
Go ahead, Sean. Okay, and so, it's a small-scale development, again, I think this is a prime option for us to try this out. If it proves unsuccessful, I'm pretty sure that the market will show that we're not gonna do it again. But if it proves to be successful, I'm pretty sure this gentleman and/or others of his ilk are going to want to pursue other similar developments.
We built one-
Part of the same group.
Eighteenth and Blackwater, twenty-four unit.
Ilk.
They were rented within the first week.
Make a motion to approve.
I just wanted, I just wanted to remind counsel-
Second.
Well, I'm not gonna get cut off, 'cause I'm the chair, I'm gonna make a point that forty percent or forty-three percent of our rooftops in this city are rentals and we're dealing with rental properties across the board. And I keep getting inquiries on what we're going to do. So, when it comes to rentals, yes, I'm gonna be cautious. I do have a motion and I have a second. All in favor, are you gonna have to reclusive?
I was gonna tell you that, I was gonna tell you that, Mayor, the next thirteen, he doesn't have to recuse himself.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Sahil, it sounds like you have an ecstatic future tenant for your property as well.
And you're gonna be in Arkansas. I have a motion and a second, all in favor indicate, well, roll call vote.
Eads?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Dawkins? Reed? Bana?
Yes.
Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
No. Okay, thank you for being here, sir, I appreciate it. The motion carries. Okay, for the sake of clarity, counsel, the next thirteen through twenty-six, twenty-three are all ordinance revisions that have come before, the ordinance review committee coming before counsel for approval. So, in the sake of clarity, I would ask that we move through these very quickly. Item thirteen, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, ordinance repealing and placing into reserve, Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Four, Air Pollution, Article One, in general, Sections four dash one through four dash twenty-two, Article Two, variances four dash thirty-one through thirty-four and four forty-one through four forty-six, and provide for repealer and severability.
Point of order before you begin, sir, is there a way that we could bulk these together if nobody has any questions or discussion?
Unfortunately, no, the state statute requires we have to take each ordinance change up individually and have an individual vote on them.
Okay, well, I just, remember, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, next item.
Fourteen, discussion, consideration, possible action, approving ordinance, amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Five, Alcoholic Beverages, Article Four, Occupational Tax, Sections five dash one twenty-four, Application for Certificate, Certificate of Compliance Investigation, five dash one twenty-five issuing of certificate of zoning and certificate of compliance and providing repealer and severability.
I do have a quick question on that.
Sure.
Please, you can give a brief answer. So, basically, what we're asking is moving forward, these types of applications will be submitted directly to the city attorney's office versus the city clerk?
As opposed to going to the city clerk, it'll go to the city manager or if the city manager designates somebody, then they'll, they'll go to that designee. I will probably hint to say that the city manager, if we follow what we've customarily been doing, it'll go to the Planning and Zoning Department.
And is this a matter of efficiency, is that why this call?
It's a matter of, it's strictly a matter of efficiency and cleaning that up. We had a couple of people who came in confused as they tried to go to the city clerk's office and they hadn't done it in a number of years and we just had some issues and it's just cleanup.
Would that move to approve, sir?
Motion is second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, next item.
Fifteen, discussion, consideration, possible action, amending Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Seven, Amusements, Article Four, Circuses and Carnivals, Section dash fifty-one, Section seven dash fifty-one, Health Regulations, Providing for repealer and severability. Section seven dash fifty-one, Health Regulations, Providing for repealer and severability.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, indicate, sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries, next item.
Sixteen, discussion, consideration, possible action, amending Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Nine, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Three, Building Code, Section nine dash thirty-four, Code amended, Paragraph one eighteen point zero, Certificate of Occupancy, and Providing for repealer and severability.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate, sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries, next item.
Seventeen, discussion, consideration, possible action, amending an ordinance of the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Fifteen, Fire Protection and Prevention, Article Four, Open Burning, Section fifteen one oh nine, and Commercial Open Burning, and Providing for repealer and severability.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? All in favor, indicate, sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries, next item.
Eighteen, discussion, consideration, possible action, approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Sixteen, Food and Food Handlers, Article One, in general, Sections sixteen dash two, Food Service Sanitation Manual, sixteen dash five, Sanitary Regulations for Factories, and Section sixteen dash six, Sterilizing Equipment Required, Providing repealer and severability.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate, sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries, next item.
Nineteen, discussion, consideration, possible action, approving an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Eighteen, Garbage and Refuse, Article One, in general, Section eighteen dash two, Permit, Authority for Commercial Haulers, Section eighteen dash three, Compliance with Landfill Regulations Creating Hazards, Article Two, Municipal Collection and Disposal Service, Section eighteen dash twenty-six, Sanitation Containers at Commercial Establishments, and Providing for repealer and severability.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, indicate, sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries, next item.
Twenty, discussion, consideration, possible action, approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Nineteen, Health and Sanitation, Repealing and Placing into Reserve, Section nineteen dash one, Health Department Providing for repealer and severability.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, indicate, sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries, next item.
Twenty-one, discussion, consideration, possible action, approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Twenty-three, Manufactured Homes, Trailers, Manufactured Home Parks, et cetera, Article One, in general, Section twenty-three dash one, Definitions, Section twenty-three dash three, Notice of Violation, Section twenty-three dash five, Reinfection of Conditions, Section twenty-three six, Inspection of Parks and Authorized, Section twenty-three nine, Written Order to be Given After Hearing, Section twenty-three eleven, Hearing and Authorized When Permit Denied, Suspended, et cetera, Section twenty-three twelve, Health or Inspection Officer May Take Immediate Action When Emergency Exists, Article Two, Licenses and Permits, Section twenty-three to twenty-five, Application, Section twenty-three through thirty-one, Renewal Applications Contents, Article Four, Manufactured Home and Travel Trailer Park Regulations, Division One, Generally, Section twenty-nine through dash twenty-three, Rector Damaged Homes Not to Be Kept in Parks, and Providing for repealer and severability.
Quick correction, that was Section twenty-three dash ninety-three on that last one.
That is correct, and I'll make one note on this one, on twenty-three dash ninety-three, that specific ordinance did not go through the ordinance review committee, but it is the exact same change, taking the Health Department, who no longer performs these functions, and changing it to our inspection officer, who will be now doing these functions.
Move to approve.
I do have one question on that.
Sorry.
So, one major specific on this is, in case there is a situation of a crisis matter, then the city manager will have the authority to make determinations on the spot. Would this body be advised of those types of situations? Does the ordinance create that?
What the ordinance does is it gives the city, it recognizes the city manager has the authority in certain emergency situations to make, to take certain actions, as the city manager has that authority under charter. So, I would assume, and I know what happens when you assume, that the city manager would, upon doing that, advise the members of the city council that such an action was taken.
I will second Councilwoman Eads' motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate, sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries, next item.
Item twenty-two, discussion, consideration, possible action, approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Thirty-one, Healthcare Facilities, and Article Three, Massage, Different, Division One, In General, Section thirty-one dash one oh five, Approval or Denial, Division Two, Massage Establishment License, Section thirty-one dash one thirteen, Facilities and Equipment, Division Three, Massage Therapist License, Section thirty-one dash one thirty-one, Application, Division Four, Operating Requirements, Section thirty-one dash one fifty-two, Requirements for Cubicles, Booths, et cetera, and Providing for repealer and severability.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate, sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries, next item.
Item twenty-three, consideration, discussion, consideration, possible action, approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Thirty-two, Peddlers and Solicitors, Article One, in general, Section thirty-two dash three, Exceptions for Veterans and Nonprofit Organizations, Section thirty-two dash four, Duty of Police to Enforce, Section thirty-two dash five, Loud Noises and Speaking Devices, Article Two, Permit, Section thirty-two dash twenty-one, Required, Section thirty-two dash twenty-five, Fees, Health Certificates, Article Three, Food Stuff, Section thirty-two dash fifty-one, Inspections by Health Department, Section thirty-two dash fifty-two, Condemning Unwholesome Food, Article five, Special Events, Section thirty-two dash eighty-three, Special Events Defined, and Section thirty-two dash eighty-eight, Exemptions, Section thirty-two ninety-five, Health Regulations, and Providing for repealer and severability.
One note, one note on this one before the motion, is that this change includes a fee increase. That fee increase was due to a set of fees that were in city ordinance that had not been changed since nineteen eighty-seven. We took them, and our justification for changing those is we used consumer price index increases from nineteen ninety through twenty twenty-three, using the CPI for the U.S. city average, and so it's just basically taking those nineteen eighty-seven dollars, we skipped a couple years, started nineteen ninety, and bringing them up to today's dollars.
One question on that. A lot of the language that I read in this proposed ordinance would give me the assumption, and correct it if it's wrong, that vagrancy and the unhoused community who may be soliciting, I don't know, chunk change, could also become a target of this ordinance? Right, would they need, be required to get a permit to panhandle, I guess, if you will?
Panhandling is not specifically stated in this ordinance. I haven't actually looked at whether a, I know a huckster is in here, a solicitor is in here, I've not looked to see whether that equals panhandling or not, so I can't really answer that question directly. I can tell you, when we looked at this, as a general rule, this was looked at, because the Health Department no longer provides these services, and they are the ones who proposed that these be changed, so we made those changes accordingly, because it's something the Health Department does not do. And we just looked at fees, we did not look at the panhandling issue whatsoever concerning this.
From a historical standpoint, Ms. Bannon, that would, yes, include panhandling. They would require to come in and get a permit.
I thought the courts had ruled against that.
No, they ruled against content, they didn't.
Okay.
I have a clarification question on this one also, Dawn. When we did this on ordinance review committee, we had also talked about requiring solicitors to wear their permit in a clear lanyard, so that it was readily visible, but I didn't see this in the version.
Yeah, I apologize, that did not get in here. If you want to send it back for me to do that, I did not put that, I apologize, I put the time in there.
Okay.
I put it that it has to be definitely on their person, I forgot the.
Clear.
The clear lanyard. And I, or, you can either approve it, and we'll go back and do it, I'll do it in the next set of changes, or we can send this one back completely. My recommendation would be, go ahead and prove this, and then I'll come back with another one here in a couple, three months.
I've got a second question to go with something, go ahead.
Okay, so just to clarify, I've had a lot of people reach out and complain about solicitors coming to the door, trying to press their way into the door, you know, we tell them, hey, ask for a permit, et cetera, but if we make them visibly wear their permit in like a clear case, like around their neck with a lanyard, so nobody has to even open the door to say, yeah, show me your permit on your phone, which puts certain people at risk, so they can see it through, and I had mentioned this at one of my neighborhood association meetings, and even the CAOs were supportive of that idea, because you can see it when you're looking through your storm door that's locked, I mean, et cetera, and know whether they've got a permit or they don't have a permit. So I would really like to have that included in the ordinance, and I'm fine with if we want to approve this the way it is, and then bring it back. The only other question that I had on this, Dawn, was, we'd also talked about the complaints being driven by the citizens, remember, based upon the input that I had gotten from PD about.
Right.
And I don't see that contained in the ordinance either.
What was the other thing that you said?
I thought I put that in here, hang on a second.
The issue about citizens being able to put forward the complaint about the.
I did think I saw it in there. But, on the permit thing, Susan, we give big pieces of paper out that are permits. The problem that I'm concerned about the lanyards that you're referring to, they already wear lanyards, and try to say that they, a lot of times they do, and they try to pass it off as our permits, so just keep that in mind.
But that's what I'm saying, like, if we actually did that, and we get some of those, when they get their permit, we get those clear cases that they can put it in, so it clearly says, City of Midwest City. I mean.
That's what I'm saying, I understand what you're trying to portray on that matter, but a lot of times they come in with lanyards around their necks, having little badges that they already have around their necks, so I don't know if that's necessarily would.
Right, I'm just thinking, if we do a public education campaign after this ordinance revision gets passed, to tell people, okay, you know, we've heard your complaints about solicitors and canvassers and so forth, and this is what we're doing in part to try to deal with that, so they will be wearing these things in a clear case, it will clearly say the City of Midwest City, if they aren't, they're in violation of this ordinance.
You say a clear case, would laminating suffice for your request? This is going to be a logistical issue for the city clerk.
Yeah, as long as they can show it, and somebody doesn't have to open their storm door, I don't care how we do it, I just want them to be able to not.
We just want to figure out how to do it.
Yes, sir, I don't want people to have to open their storm door to see it on a cell phone, or have the person, which is what usually happens, oh, my boss has it. No, no, you need to have an individualized one on your body for you, not like there's one for the entire business.
Which is, which is already the requirement, they are supposed to already be doing this.
But I want it readily visible, is what I'm saying.
Exactly, they're supposed to be carrying it, so.
Right, like, so that people don't have to open their storm door even to see, yes, they've got an appropriate permit from the City of Midwest City.
Dawn, was that the issue about the public being able to file a complaint in there that she was asking about?
Yeah, I got it. Look, if you've got the ordinance in front of you.
I do, sorry.
Look, at Section two, which, mine's a totally different printed page, but, Section two, it's under Section thirty-four, thirty-two dash four, Duty of Police to Enforce, I, we amended the title, Authority for Resident to File Complaint, Timeframe for Peddling, Soliciting, Canvassing, and it's, and then Paragraph B is the new one.
There we go. I'm sorry, Dawn, thank you.
Nope, okay, just want to make sure.
There was a lot of information in this docket, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That one at least I got.
Thank you.
If you're going to bring this back to, because of the, her thing, one of the things I've always been big on since I first became elected, is we look at things to the consumer price index. Can we make it to where the fees every five years, the city manager or his designee can raise the prices without having to come back to the council based on the consumer price index? Because we've done that with our enterprise funds and a bunch of other stuff, which just makes it a lot easier, so, and my reasoning behind it is, we don't look almost thirty-five years later and realize, oh, wait a second, we haven't kept up with the time.
I totally understand. Ms. City Clerk, would you like to address that one? Let's put it to you this way, she and I had a discussion, she asked that it not be put in there that way, even though I wrote, originally wrote it in there for the CPI to apply on a year-to-year basis.
I know, and I don't mean to be a pain, but what happens is we go.
It's just collecting the fees, so.
You never have to bring it back to the council.
Let it come back to the ordinance review.
Yeah.
You have to do a term of CPI, so you can, you can raise it.
We write stuff on the run, we mess it up.
Right.
Bring it back the next time.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
And if you guys can have an internal conversation, respectfully, authorized by the city manager, to determine how you would like to handle that, I'm just asking in terms of the public safety aspect, so however we can.
We'll figure it out.
Deal with that, that's all I'm asking, really.
And we'll bring it back to the ordinance.
And can you also, while you do that, also maybe look at the language to see how that would impact the poor, and by that, I don't mean people who prey upon people, but those who are really hungry and struggling, I don't want that, I don't, what I don't want to happen is for a genuinely struggling unhoused person to then have to be confronted with our police department because they couldn't afford to pay a fee, ask for a dollar on the corner, but again, I respect whatever conclusion you all come up with.
Sarah, if you'll send, if you'll send an email to me, I'll make sure it gets on the next.
I've made a note of that, but yes, that's a good follow-up. Because obviously, as you can tell, I did.
If you could, if you could look at my idea with the fact that every X number of years, she can determine whether or not to raise them or not, or the city manager's designee could, that way it doesn't have to come back to us, we don't look up thirty-six years later.
I have, I have that written down, yes.
Okay.
I was just going to say, shouldn't we visit those items like every five years, probably anyway?
We should be.
Yeah, and I don't know, yeah, but we hadn't done that until you all kind of put it together, right?
No, you, Dawn, you think it's better off to approve this, and then come back, he would prefer that we approve it, and then he'll bring it back for those, these few corrections.
How about move to approve, with a caveat as discussed, for future study to the ordinance review committee.
You got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
What is it, what is it that you want in there, so we can make sure we get it?
I think if I had the finalized language on, and before me, I'd be more comfortable taking a vote on it.
Oh, we're not changing any of the language in here this time.
They're going to add two more things to it later.
Later, and then we'll come back.
So, let's just hold it a nay on that.
Send me an email.
Will do. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Eads.
Yes.
Byrne.
Yes.
Dawkins.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Bannon.
Nay.
Favors.
Yes.
Dukes.
Yes. Next item.
Item twenty-four, discussion, consideration, possible action, approving the annual review of the water meter schedule of fees as allowed per Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter forty-three, Water Sewer Sewage Disposal and Storm Water Quality, Article Two, Water, Section eighteen, Installation Fees, Meter Installations, anybody but Dawn this time.
Ms. Street. I have one question that was posed to me by a resident, which is, will the cost be directed to the resident receiving the meter, or will it be split through the billing for like the entire city?
Absolutely, Honorable Mayor, Council, City Manager, this is something we have to do on a regular basis, when the costs associated with these meters go up, these meters are actually purchased by the homeowner and/or developer, builder, the plumber that's
that's been contracted to install it, installs it. We just increase the cost as the costs to us are increased, and it is specifically tied to the customer that owns or buys the meter, that is not defrayed or subsidized by anybody else. I, I think that that was pretty self-explanatory along with the table. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
If there's no more discussion, I'll move to approve.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate the same item.
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you.
Extension and motion carries. Next item.
Discussion, consideration, possible action approving amendments to the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, City Council, Section 2-17, Elected Official Accountability Act and Ethics Policy, and providing for repealer and severability, and there's an emergency clause attached.
So I, as many of you guys know, I've been very interested in this particular ordinance, and I really would like to suggest some friendly amendments, some of the language throughout the proposed updated revision. So with that said, I'd like to just see if we could take no action on this until next month's council, so I can have a chance to send some feedback as suggested revision or amended revision for consideration.
I have no objection.
Well, as the city attorney has said before, when we do stuff on the fly, we have a tendency to not get it correct. So if this is important, I think we need, and this is very important, I think we need to just get it right.
Yeah, you can move, you can move to table to make sure it does come on the next agenda in...
No, we'd have to take no action.
Okay.
Don't feel bad, Dawn.
We'll be table, you can't...
Sean just educated me on that as well.
So, did I guess I'm done?
So we're not going to take any action?
Well, we, I guess we need to make a motion, is that what you're doing?
Not on no action.
I guess we might call for a motion or not, because somebody might go ahead.
Well, we could go ahead, like, of what we've done in the past, and what we've done in the past is, when we rewrite things, sometimes it's not necessarily what we really wanted, and then we have to fix it again. So as important as this document is, I don't think it would hurt us to wait 30 more days to make sure it's right the first time that we see it. And I don't have an issue, personally, I don't have an issue, I'm just one person, but I don't have an issue with that.
Respectfully, I'd rather we work in a cooperative spirit to move this thing to finality, once and for all type of thing, because this has been banging against the rocks in different versions for months, so let's just, I, I move, we take no action, let it come back next month, and in the interim...
I would have a caveat. Ms. Banna, your suggested changes need to be in, in writing to the city attorney within 30 days.
Well, you speak quicker than I should.
Yeah, sooner than that.
Yeah, I would, I would ask that, let's see...
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, that's good.
Whatever you need.
Yes.
Two weeks.
Two weeks would be good.
So I have a motion?
You don't need a motion.
Yeah, just taking no action.
Thank you all.
Next item.
Item 26, public hearing with discussion, consideration, possible action regarding an appeal filed by the owner of the property located at 1905 Albert Drive for the notice and order for tall weeds and grass. Mr. Stroh.
My name is Elka Kazi.
Ma'am, you need to wait until Mr. Stroh addresses the council, please.
Sorry.
As you saw in the packet, you saw the pictures from the June 6 date when code enforcement originally rubbed notice, you saw pictures again from the June 15, I believe, I'm trying to double check, date when we put it on the agenda, and then passing around right now is pictures from yesterday that I took to reflect how it is presently. You saw the notice that was sent for tall grass and weeds specifically.
Sorry to interrupt, but one of these is dated June 23. Did you want that to be in this grouping, or did you just want the July 24th?
If, that was an error on our computer, they were all taken yesterday morning at 10 o'clock.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I didn't want to confuse anybody.
The applicant received the complete packet that you have on your iPad, that she has not seen the pictures we took as of yesterday morning. So, I think it's self-explanatory, open it up to any questions you may have of me before I give it to the resident.
Can we go ahead and hear from the applicant then, or the appellant?
Am I able to see the pictures that we're taking recently? Because the only ones I have are the ones that you mentioned from June.
Is it your property?
Um, yes, I'm the one.
Then you know her state or name.
Could you state your name and address for the council?
Elka Kazi, 1905 Albert Drive, Midwest City, 73130.
You have four minutes.
Okay. As you can see, those are very unflattering pictures. I have provided pictures to code enforcement of the different flowering plants and the different trees and shrubs that I have, and the mulch that I have, so I don't have any grass at all. I only have dirt and mulch, and those are mostly trees. And the fence line is actually from Sonata Side that has the Virginia creeper and the vines, so that's a pine tree that you see right there. Those are all little shrubs on the bottom, those are not weeds or tall grass. And if you go into my yard, the only thing I have is what I am certified for, for wildlife habitat, because anything that's on your municipality code enforcement is something that they do not approve of, like invasive plants, any allergens, any weeds, grass is not allowed, you can't use pesticides, I don't even use water because it grows on its own, because we have such an issue in our street with runoff stormwater, that my trees and my shrubs are actually what's holding the ground in place. If you walk in the front of my yard, you'll see all the erosion coming from everybody else's yard, from the backyard, when it floods. So actually, that is holding in place my soil, and the root system is holding the ground in place, so it's acting as its own ecosystem. But those are bushes and trees, and I have bees, I have birds, I have good insects, not invasive or bad insects, like mosquitoes and flies, so...
I have a question. Yes. When were your photos taken that you have provided that you were just showing us?
These were as soon as I got the notice on the 6th, and then they removed the notice, and then they gave me a new notice on the 9th.
So these photos were taken on June 6th?
Yes.
Okay. And then, this one's actually going to the city attorney. So, Mr. City Attorney, she's provided us a certificate from the Wildlife Habitat, which appears to be out of Reston, Virginia. Have you had a chance to look at this issue, and is there anything that is being prescribed by the National Wildlife Federation and her Certified Wildlife Habitat that would supersede our ordinances?
Do you have a question about the table you got on these certificates?
I was just asking the city attorney, because...
We, we do not have any city ordinances that would, okay, that would recognize this type, our ordinances don't recognize this type of certificate, so...
So our ordinances supersede?
Yeah, this is, yes, this is a nonprofit organization, private nonprofit organization that issues these, it, we're not bound to follow this in any way, shape, or form.
Mr. Stroh? Has she seen the pictures from yesterday?
Um, I can...
Can you show her the, where, where the pictures at from yesterday? Can you show them?
You can actually look, you can see the different...
Ma'am, can you look at the pictures from yesterday?
Those pictures pretty consistent with what it looks like yesterday.
Um, let me just...
So I do want to...
So, since I did tell my neighbor that part of it was his yard, as you can see, this is his fence, and now you can see the difference in his fence.
Okay.
So part of it is coming from his yard.
Okay.
Those are the Virginia creepers and the vines and all the weeds that are coming from his yard. Mine was already cut on February, when my tree people came in.
Full disclosure, I think I need to be fully honest with you, those pictures that were taken yesterday, those don't pay your yard justice.
No, they're mostly trees, though.
Because it's worse than that.
And that's a pine.
Because I was there when the pictures were taken.
Okay.
I saw what your yard looked like, and I understand that wildlife thing. It's nonprofit, you pay $25, they don't come out and inspect it, they don't do anything. That yard, the pictures for your backyard, those pictures do not do it justice. You can barely, standing in your neighbor's yard that you've made all these accusations against in emails, you can barely see the top of your roof. That's how thick it is.
That's how tall it is.
Well, that's how thick and tall it is.
It's not that thick, because I can walk through it.
Okay. I'll call you on that, I was there, I saw it. I didn't rely on those pictures. Most everything that I vote on in my ward or anybody else's ward, I go look at it before I vote. I know how important this was, because I'd probably got 30 emails from you. I offered a month or so ago to go out into your backyard to look at it, to help you deal with your complaints against code enforcement and against the police department. So I asked them yesterday, when they went out there, let me go with you, because I want to be able to see, ma'am, I'm talking right now, okay? I asked them to take me with them when they went out there. That yard is, is worse than what the pictures look like, and I, it needs to be dealt with.
So you're not looking at the other yards, you're just looking at my yard?
Well, right now, that's the yard that we're concerned about. I don't...
And then the other yards have down limbs, tall grass.
Okay, there's, there's only one yard that's on the agenda tonight, and that's yours. Mr. Stroh, has she been given proper notice?
Of all the other yards...
Mr. Stroh, has she been given proper notice?
Over six and 12 inches and weeds.
Okay, we're dealing with one yard.
Yes, but you're not looking at the whole...
Move to close discussion. We're not going to sit here and talk over each other like this. So we're either going to be professional and conduct ourselves accordingly, or I'm moving to close this discussion, and let's just vote on this issue.
So my thing is that six years ago, I was left the house from my husband in worse condition, so this is a work in progress.
Ma'am, would you, would you, are you willing to participate? Because what Councilwoman Eads would like is for us to have a civil conversation back and forth, so if you would allow them to finish speaking and then respond to their question, vice versa.
Has she been properly served?
Yes, she was posted, posted on the door, and then this was the part of the treatment spot. We posted her door and then also mailed a letter to her house. The letter date was June 7.
Did, did you have the legal right to be on the property that you were on to take the pictures?
Yes, we did.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, you've reviewed this, I know you have. Has code, has code enforcement followed all the proper steps?
To, in my review of it, yes, they have followed the requirements under, excuse me, state statute and city ordinance.
Okay. What happens, if we approve what code enforcement has said and deny her appeal, what happens next?
She does have the right to another appeal. If she does not exercise that right, then she has the time specified within city ordinance to clean it up. If she fails to clean it up within that timeframe, then we can send a contractor out, clean it up, and place a lien on the property.
How long of a time does she have before the contractor will be out?
How, how long before the contractor would be, I know the ordinance is what, 30 days, if I remember.
The, the ordinance for tall grass and weeds, which is what we gave, which was because of the thickness of the yard, harboring rodents and insects, is 10 days.
I apologize.
She has 10 days to file her appeal to be heard in front of you, which she did, which puts a stop on that clock. So therefore, it would be up to the council to give her X amount of time, is how it's always been done in the past, to abate or remove the nuisance. I believe the second appeal that the city attorney is discussing is through district court.
Correct. Okay, she has a contractor that she's talked to, that says he can't get to it this week, or the next couple of weeks. If we gave her 30 days for her contractor to have this taken care of completely, or the contractor from the city would be out there, would that be okay with you?
I would have no issue with that, as long as it's clear as to what she's expected to do.
To have it within city code in 30 days.
She feels she's there today.
Well, by, to be within city code by, by inspection of code enforcement, because unfortunately, there's a lot of people that believe that those wildlife things give you, I don't know what you call it, gives you free run, but if you read it, it says right in there, you have to follow the ordinances from, with this municipal code.
Correct, and I did want to add that for Councilwoman Eads, that it, in the National Wildlife Federation letter that is attached in your packet, it does state that we encourage participants to create their wildlife habit in ways that mesh with the aesthetics of their neighborhood.
Okay, are there other properties in Midwest City that you're dealing with of similar like this?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the practice across the board, this is how you give them, you give them a citation or warning? And we've had one of those come before our council within the last year or so, correct?
Correct.
So we haven't gone outside the procedures?
That is correct.
We followed all the policies in the, in the code. Would be my recommendation that we deny the appeal and give her 30 days to get it taken care of, and up to the code of the city, and if not, then contractor from the city be sent out there to deal with it.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Did you make that a motion?
Can I ask, I'm sorry, because I know we kind of asked you to sit there for a minute, I'd like you to respond. First and foremost, are you willing to make a commitment to cooperate and work with Mr. Stroh? And I'm telling you, sometimes people feel like we're on opposite sides, but Mr. Stroh is the guy who's going to guide you through this problem of, this is what needs to be dealt with, does that make sense? And he can actually make that more convenient. But are you willing to commit to using your contractor to come into compliance with code as is defined by Mr. Stroh in 30 days?
The only issue is I work less than 40 hours, so I, it's paycheck by paycheck. So if you can just give me that leeway, yes.
Maybe we can give it to you again.
Yeah, because I, I have to pay little by little.
And if you don't, I don't know if his, her four minutes were up, but if you have any concluding thoughts, because I think we're going over your four minutes at this point.
That's okay. Like I said, this is a work in progress. It was a lot worse a couple of years ago, so that is why I had concerns about this year, since it's way better than it was last year. And I had no issues last year. But every year, I do more mulch, I cut down more things, I trim down more things, and I create more room, because I'm putting a playground, I'm putting a greenhouse, and that's not going to be there come this fall. I just need time.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I second it. This is a motion to deny, we're...
And to give her 30 days to be in compliance according to the city municipal code, and to work with Stroh, Mr. Stroh's people to get it, it's at their, it's at their determination.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate the same item.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Ma'am, you got 30 days. And we did give you latitude, because you were being questioned by members of the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, we have come to the end of our agenda, and now we move into new business public discussion. We have several people that have signed up to speak to the council. I want to remind you that if it's not an agenda item, we cannot engage in a back-and-forth conversation with you. You will have four minutes to state your case, and then we will call time. So, Mr. Reed, it looks like you're on deck. Remember to state your name and address for the record, please.
Professor Reed, 551 East Harmon Drive, Midwest City, 7310. Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Manager, and it's a privilege to be up here speaking with you again, and congratulations, Mr. Dawkins, for your seat. Respectfully, you know, from my experience and others that I've heard from, I would respectfully like to ask the city to conduct research into placements of red light cameras that will capture violator tags for those who run the light, especially those who turn while making turn lanes, or while in the turning lanes, which are the majority of red light runners. I have seen as many as five vehicles at a time continue to turn after the light turns red before and while entering the intersection. It's just a whole safety concern for me. You know, I, I suggest, you know, my opinion, to conduct maybe a study on it, on major intersections, like 29th and Douglas, 15th and Douglas, 29th and Air Depot, Reno and Air Depot, Reno and Midwest City Boulevard, and Reno and Douglas. And my second thing I want to talk about is just to praise code enforcement on their work and attention when citizens call or email them. I personally, for my ward, would want to get a personal response from the code enforcement officer every time I send them an email for a concern or a question, you know, arising in my, in my neighborhood or street. And I just thank you, thank the council as a whole for keeping the city moving forward, and for doing their best to make the city the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you to code enforcement.
Mr. Walkie, you're on deck.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Colin Walkie, and I am here on behalf of Midwest Point Apartments located at 1200 North Air Depot Boulevard. Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you for your time. This apparently has been a fairly longstanding problem since 2012, and I'm late to the game. Uh, but one of the things that I have noticed in reviewing this issue is, is that there appears to be a severe lack of communication. Fortunately, I think that those, uh, issues have been addressed recently, thanks to the help of Mr. Mase and the city as well. And so as a result of that, my client has taken steps affirmatively, uh, and recently to address the habitability issues and the immediate safety concerns in the facility by shoring up the two units that needed additional shoring that will be completed tomorrow. They have also pulled a permit in order to, uh, fix the retaining wall. But I want to outline just briefly, obviously I have four minutes, the history of this so that you all can understand that my clients, Midwest Point Apartments, aren't just simply dragging their feet, there really have been miscommunications. So beginning on May 16th, this city declared all of the buildings dilapidated, in spite of the fact that we have our engineer here tonight, who is also available to answer any questions that you may have, and has put together a report. Uh, 10 days after that, my client emailed the city attorney and said, "We have an engineer, he's working on getting a report, we expect to have that report to you by June 6th." Through no fault of my client, Mr. Hill will attest to the same, that report was not finalized until June 20th. And on June 20th, that report was emailed, or I'm sorry, the email saying that there was a delay was on June 20th. On June 23rd, the full engineer's report was submitted. On July 3rd, my client then sent an email to the city attorney outlining a plan of action. In each item of the plan of action, it stated, "We need to pull permits." Mr. Mase then kindly responded and said, "There's a few steps you need to take before you begin pulling permits." On July 13th, we received a revised report that identified only four units as being uninhabitable while the rest of the property is repaired and remediated. Uh, as a result of that, my clients have retained Absolute Electrical Contractors LLC, uh, Millennium Roofing and Construction, which is a, uh, long-term construction company here in Oklahoma. These are flat roofs, so they know what they're dealing with. Uh, they've also contacted Elevating Contracting and Construction as the contractor. And we had previously tried to pull a permit on June 14th, but were denied because we didn't have the complete engineer's report. And so what I'm going to ask the city council to do is to direct the city manager to allow us to retain the occupants that we currently have pending the next, uh, city council meeting so that we can get this up to snuff and show you that now that the lines of communication are open, you have a local attorney here that knows the city of Midwest City, grew up in Dell City, very familiar with all of this, and I'm more than happy to make myself available to make sure that those repairs are made, to address the city council's concerns, because there are concerns, and we acknowledge that.
Mr. Walkie, thank you for being here, we appreciate your time. I can't engage, but your communication lines with Mr. Mase is vital and important.
Yes, and to the extent that anybody has any questions of our engineer, to ensure that the lawyer isn't misleading you in any way, shape, or form, more than happy to have him answer any questions.
Well, we, we really can't engage in any questions back and forth, because this is not an agenda item, and we will address that through Mr. Mase.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Tim Taylor, you signed up, uh, speed?
Tim Taylor, 10113 Oak Park Drive. Mayor and City Council, thank you for your willingness to serve our city. My former boss said on several occasions that the burden of leadership can never be fully seen, it can only be felt. From the viewpoint of the average person, you simply meet for a few hours per month, make some decisions for the city, and go on about your daily life until the next council meeting, maybe before tonight. Tonight's different. I happen to believe and have realized that serving on this city council will include much more, including the broader weight of responsibility for results and repercussions of said decisions. Sincerely, as a citizen of Ward 3 and as a member of a church that meets in Ward 5, thank you. At the conclusion of 2021, God gave me the opportunity to resign from my second job so that I could more fully focus on a few responsibilities of my own. Having the time to be more engaged in civic life, including praying for, encouraging, and engaging you, has been a great blessing. I must say that I am consistently encouraged that my family and many of my closest friends are residing in a city like this one, with city leadership that seems to have a genuine interest and desire for moving our city forward, attempting to constantly improve the day-to-day experience of the thousands of its residents, along with its local businesses, organizations, and churches. Progress is a loaded word, though, in my mind. And what one might call progress, another might perceive is exactly the opposite of progress. In our attempt for human and societal progress, there exists a danger to simply attempt to copy the decisions and actions of others that from a topical viewpoint seem to have achieved a greater level of progress. Oftentimes, it seems that we attach our measure of progress to monetary successes and moderate amenities. While I am for financial increase and nicer things, I also realize that long-term success is what is best, even if one is unable to keep up with the perceived progress of another. Allow me then to reference the mayoral proclamation from last month's meeting. There were two given out that day, but the second is the one that immediately and gravely concerned me. After the recognition of Lake Appreciation Month, July, Mayor Duke's then recognized and reaffirmed June as Pride Month in Midwest City, Oklahoma. While I appreciate and agree with our city's mindset to attempt to promote a sense of safety and hospitality for those who would live, work, do business, or play here, I cannot agree with publicly platforming a sinful lifestyle. Ladies and gentlemen, please realize that even the word pride mentioned in Scripture, the Holy Bible, to my knowledge, is never in a good or positive light. It is man's and even Satan's pride that has caused and resulted in every evil and catastrophe in the history of humanity since our fall from God's grace. Pride truly goes before destruction, and sin is a reproach, a source of shame, to any people. The citizens of Midwest City are not exempt from these guarantees, yet for a myriad of reasons, we have allowed sinful lifestyles to receive special protections and promotions as if we are ignorant of the truth. We do not need a Pride Month, no matter who may support it. What we need is a heart and attitude of humility toward a holy, righteous, almighty God. He is real and is watching as we conduct our affairs, and we are bound to reap what we sow, whether good or bad. Righteousness is what we truly, is what truly progresses a nation of people, and as best as possible, righteous causes are what we should be promoting and platforming. In closing, I wish to promote the good news that any sinner who is willing to humbly repent of their sin and their way, and turn to Jesus Christ with faith through his death, burial, and resurrection, can be born again into the family of God to receive forgiveness of sin and an eternally righteous accounting before the Lord, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Thompson.
My issue is, uh...
Then your issue's resolved.
Which was resolved to my stance of action.
That's awesome.
Until a later day.
Mr. Burr. John Burr, in Willamette.
He will.
He will have left off, so it was here for the same thing.
Well, we have completed that, and ends our new business public discussion. We do have an executive session attached to this. I would entertain a motion to recess and go on through the other... A motion and a second, all in favor, indicate the same.
Aye.
Yeah, why not?
Well, one smoking, so she's got...
Go, go come back. We certainly want to make sure she's...
When you get coffee, you just give it for yourself.
Uh, I didn't think you would drink coffee this late.
I wouldn't do that.
I know. You're jacked up on coffee candy.
Yeah, she started taking away from me, she's like, "You don't need me," like, her...
Okay, I need, we were, uh, I need a, uh, motion to, uh...
A motion to preempt or...
No, we need a municipal authority.
Motion to have a municipal authority.
Did we? No, we don't, not, hold, hold on.
I thought we recessed.
We recessed at 9:38, but we never took a vote, and everybody just, I guess we could say a lie, but... So, we'll say we recessed at 9:38.
Yes.
And we're now in a hospital, a general...
Well, I'm, uh, passing the gavel to the Vice Mayor and to finish out this marathon.
Oh, thank you.
I'm out.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Talk's lame. Okay, call this meeting back in order for the municipal authority. Uh, pardon me?
Yes.
Yes, we recessed from council, and we passed on the executive session or whatever we did there, and now we're in the municipal authority in the consent agenda.
Move to approve?
All in favor of the consent agenda? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, next is, uh, discussion item number one of the municipal authority.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, approving a contract amendment from Republic Services that would provide three more years of residential curbside, single-stream recycling services to Midwest City customers. Mr. Streets and Ms., Ms...
Honorable Vice Mayor.
Have we figured out how to recycle glass again?
Yes, we do, actually.
In, in, from our house?
So, that's a great question. There are, there are options for that, unfortunately, you don't get 100% of it recycled. What I would like to do, before we actually, we can take a deep dive, uh, but first and foremost, I want to let you all know that we have a representative from Republic Services, Crystal Bennett, who's going to get an opportunity to speak to some of the issues or concerns that you may or may not have related to our recycling services, because I know there were some questions. Uh, we have been fortunate to have them. We've been in two different contracts, five-year contracts, 10 years, have a wonderful relationship. I want to remind everybody, uh, for those that were participants in the Super Recycler Program, it was fantastic experience for those that were involved, had a lot of customer engagement. I mean, we do have a, a rather extraordinarily high participation rate, over 80% of our customers actually participate and are appreciative. They, you know, obviously for years, they want to recycle, and so it's been a good experience for us, and, uh, I look forward to hearing what Mrs. Crystal Bennett has to say about some specific statistics, I think, that will help you all, and obviously we're here to answer questions, and I'll take a step back from the mic.
Perfect. Thank you, Paul, and it's so great to be here. And I'm going to be really quick, but I just want to say one thing. It has been, I have the best team to work with here. I manage 29 cities, and Paul and Carrie and their team... I manage 29 cities, and Paul and Carrie and their team are outstanding. I cannot tell you what great people that you guys have for the city. Just a couple of things. You guys had recycling, over four million pounds last year came out of Midwest City. That all went to Batliner, which is in Oklahoma City. Batliner, it's sorted, it's sold from Oklahoma City. Everything that went to Batliner and that was sorted and sold stayed here domestically in the United States. So, they have markets all around here that are looking for these materials. You guys have done a fabulous job. I mean, when we got out with the Super Recycler Program, it is at least 82% that participate in this program. People are wanting it. They want to do better. In the program, we educated people. We let people know. You guys were featured on OKRA, the Oklahoma Recycling Association. I know, I mean, this is probably a little premature, but I know that you guys have been nominated along with Republic Services for Keep Oklahoma Beautiful. So, everything stays here. Every, every, we can attest to everything that goes to the recycling facility is sorted through and taken care of with Republic Services. We can, we can, we can document every truck that goes through and to speak to Mr. Reed, yes, they still take glass. We don't take it going here, and I will tell you why. It, we could amend the contract to take it, but Edmund just decided to add glass to theirs, and it costs $50,000 more a year to take glass. And that's with the provision that we can go up from there. The closest glass place to take glass is Midlothian, Texas. And the, and so the footprint you're putting to send that to Midlothian, Texas, to clean that glass, you make $200 per load for a truckload of glass. It costs $1,500 per truckload to take it down there. We have a minimum of 10 truckloads that would come out of here, so that's $10,000. You're already in the hole before. So, we really try to focus on those things that you can recycle. 60% of, of is newspapers, papers, cardboard, and one and two plastics make up 60% of the recycling commodities. So, really, just focusing on those is such a great debt. A thing to add, there are three landfills here in Oklahoma City. That's really unusual. Most cities just have one landfill. You think about it. You guys kept almost four million pounds out of the landfill. Landfills are done by age, by life, by years. So, in, in, we probably have the longest with Republic Services. I think we have around 40 years. But tell me where you're going to put three more landfills by Oklahoma City? Because as the landfills age out, the price gets higher and higher and higher because you don't have airspace. So, when you're diverting four million pounds a year, then that's a lot. You're saving a lot of airspace. So, any other questions? Or, I mean, like I said, we appreciate, we want to continue our partnership. I, any other questions?
Paul, you might talk about, we are handling glass internally, not through...
Yeah, that's what I was, so I wanted to speak to your point. So, I, you know that I'm an advocate for recycling. You know, I personally recycle, and, and I never put, I didn't use to put glass in the single stream. And the reason is because I got to see what glass looked like when it went to the materials recovery facility. Glass gets broken up in ground, and then it can't be 100% recovered in the same way that the glass that goes in those bins that we use. So, with Tim's blessing, the city manager's approval, we actually reached out to a company out near, called Dublock, about of Mulgee. And they provided bins to us at no cost for mixed glass and clear glass. We were able to build, we put some gravel down, extended a fence, and put that in. They dumped that for free, no cost to us. And 100% of all glass that ends up in those containers is recycled. That doesn't happen very often, and glass is 100% reusable. So, it can be used again and again and again to make, keep making those precious bottles that you and I like so much. So, what I'll tell you is that what Midwest City's chosen to do is actually the path that most, if you talk to anybody that knows anything about recycling, that's the path they would recommend. Even though it takes a little bit of effort for customers to bring it to us, you're getting 100% of it recovered and recycled at no additional cost, having to be subsidized by other customers. And that just doesn't happen with many, if you're talking about commodities, that they happen with many commodities. I know it's late. Thank you, Crystal.
No, I think we need to keep, hey, it's not 10 yet, and breakfast.
Exactly.
And we will do the Super Recycler again, Mr. Favre, so I know I'll see you, so...
Can I ask some, for some education here? I, I just first, first and foremost, I need to validate and verify that, because I know this contract, when I looked at it over the budget review, was a pretty hefty contract there. First and foremost, I need to verify that the city is actually saving money, that's one question, by utilizing this contract. Number two question is, I've been recently educated that due to economics, global changes, the hunger or the desire for recycled goods no longer exist within developing countries, countries like China and others. And that what is happening with a lot of recycle companies is they buy these goods, and then they end up somewhere else and not end up in truly being recycled, if that makes sense. That it's a feel-good thing that we do with the hope that we're recycling, but that it's not meeting the actual intent.
Well, I want to, so we'll both speak to that point. I love the fact that you asked that question.
Right.
So, here's the thing. Several years ago, do you all remember when we had to take plastic bags and glass, remove it from the waste stream? It crazed a big uproar. The reason that happened is because we, we ended up having a glut of commodities that wouldn't be purchased because a lot of the commodities that are Murfs and Murfs all across the US were selling, were going to foreign countries. So, that forced those materials recovery facilities and the recycling groups to take a step back. Said, "You know what? If that market isn't available, we don't, it's not doing what we wanted to do." Everybody that recycles doesn't just do it for feel-good, it's because they believe they want to make a difference in every decision they make when they decide what goes in the trash and what goes in their bin. And so what they did is said, "You know what? We had actually a place in Tulsa, kind of pioneered this, said, "You know what? I want to make sure we have a domestic user, end user, for every single ton of commodities that's collected." Well, I'm here to tell you, Batliner, Republic Services, our partner, all of the material that you recycle in Midwest City goes to domestic end users. Not a single bit of it goes overseas. We'll tell you that there's a lot of misinformation out there, and part of it is because they're, they're a little bit frustrated or challenged. This is a narrative, but it's three years old. It's not current. So, what I'll tell you is, the good news is for us, I personally witnessed it. I invite, in fact, we invite council members, if that's something you would like, we've done that in the past. If there's something you'd like to go tour the facility and actually see it firsthand, that's something we can arrange. But the good news is, we're doing it the right way and for the right reasons. Do you want to speak to any of those issues?
No, that is 100% correct. Everything is staying here domestically. I will tell you, last year, mixed paper has gone up. Like, it's, mixed paper's like $39 a ton right now. We have a lot of mixed paper. Sometimes we'll send that to Mexico, but we have such a market here. I mean, I know stuff goes to Tennessee. I mean, I'm talking very close. Where, so what he does is he markets, I mean, you know, Oklahoma City's not huge like some of the others. You heard the East Coast and the West Coast, they were shipping stuff out. Here with Batliner, everything stays in this area, because the shorter distance that he can sell it, the better for us, right? So, and he, so he keeps everything here, if that helps at all.
Okay, I don't think that Councilwoman Banna's question got answered specifically, so I'm going to tag team on this for just a second. My question is twofold. Number one, I see the pricing proposal for the next three years. 2324 is $4.40 a cart, and it incrementally increases over the next two years. Where are we at currently on the price per cart?
That is a great question, because I don't think that I brought that with us. You caught me a little bit, it's $4. So, $4. Are you asking, well, first of all, are you referencing?
Right now, today, per cart.
Were you referencing Councilwoman Banna's first question?
I have, I have two questions tied in together. One is, what is the current price per cart? To see what is the increase that we're looking at for the first year of this three-year contract?
I can tell you, it's 8% is what it went up this year.
Okay.
So, and that was, I mean, I think we all know everything that's happened in the last year. And with the fuel and the lack of employees and everything, so all of that went into that. You are definitely, there, I, I can tell you, other cities are priced higher than you are. So, um, we took, we really put our pencil to it, to be honest with you.
Okay, so it's an 8% increase for the first year of this three-year proposed contract? And then the percentage increase per year thereafter is at what percentage?
4%. It's at 4%, which is under CPI right now.
Okay. Now, I want to tie that back into my current, the question that Councilwoman Banna asked, or at least that I heard it this way, which is, is it advantageous for us to pay these prices? We've had conversations about our trash and recycling, about bringing it in-house, about continuing to outsource, about all of the issues. Where is it going? Is it effectively being recycled? All of these issues have been discussed. What I'm asking you, Mr. Streets, is, in your opinion, is it still beneficial for us to go to contract with Republic to pick up the recyclables versus we would lose our recycling project or have to make it an internal project in terms of cost effectiveness?
Yeah, so if you'll notice, it is a three-year contract. Part of the reason it's a three-year contract is because no one else could competitively bid the contract within a 12-month window. So, as I've explained, and you actually were a part of that email chain, and so was the vice mayor, that lead time for large equipment, medium to large-size equipment right now is 18, 24 months. We can't get another contractor that could in, I, I love Republic Services, but we have to do our due diligence and make sure that we competitively bid it in order to get additional bidders and not just necessarily single, you know, "Hey, we're just going to have to give it to you."
Right, single-source contract.
The only way that we can do that is if we give them more than a year.
Lead time?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so, so that's part of the reason we did a three-year set. So, we could, we actually had three different pricing options. Went to the city manager's office, first one was a one-year extension, a three-year extension, or a five-year extension. Five-year extension actually had a, was less money. The increase was smaller over year over year. But for us, we felt like the best thing for, for our citizen or our customers was to do a three-year, because that allowed us a couple of years to make sure that we cleaned up what we could push out to, to look for proposals and make sure that it was competitively bid. And that gives us an option to also evaluate whether or not there is a feasibility of taking it on and doing it internally. Other cities have looked at that, too. Unfortunately, the volatility of the commodities market is a little bit, it's a challenge. You're taking on some risk. So, they're absorbing some of that risk. They're larger. We're not quite that large. Well, I tell you that we're going to seriously consider it and make sure that if, if it's bid competitively, which is our expectation, in a couple of years, to make sure we give them plenty of lead time, the city will also provide a bid to say, "Okay, well, this is what we think we could do for the same cost." As far as saving money, I think it's hard to say, "Well, is this saving money overall?" Well, I think it's the best decision to make to preserve what we believe is a high level of service for our customers that they've come to expect. They requested it. We didn't just, out of a vacuum, decide to provide recycling to our customers. We had multiple, lots of people that requested it. And I think you wouldn't have an 80% rate of, of use as far as, you know, customer participation if you didn't have customers that liked it or wanted to do it. So, what I would tell you is, you know, as far as saving money, I think a lot of people say, "Oh, well, you know, how do we save money by recycling?" That's a little bit of a challenge, because I think what you've got to decide is, is it money today or is it money tomorrow? Ultimately, if we save air, landfill space, air, you know, at a landfill, you are saving money. Is it, is it being able to take and reuse some of those products and have poster, post-consumer recycled products? Yeah, absolutely. And it is, I mean, I think it's an argument depending upon where, where you are in the US, is whether or not that market's still alive. But I'll just tell you, more and more are actually, and the reason I know this is because I also sit on the board of the Oklahoma Recycling Association with Crystal. And what I'll tell you is, more and more, you'll see bottles that actually, some bottles have gone to 100% post-consumer recycled product. That, you couldn't find anything over 10 to 15% even two years ago. So, the market's evolving, and it's evolving in the right way. I think it's important for us, as citizens, as decision-makers, to provide our citizens with a way for them to do what they think they can do, do their part to help preserve this planet, the environment, and the quality of life in the city of Midwest City.
Mr. Sullivan's coming forward.
These folks were not part of our budget session, but I would remind you that Tim and I budgeted and commit to surveying our citizens this year on a number of issues. And recycling is, will be our plan to have a section dedicated to recycling and get, get input from our citizens as to what is the price point that is too much for them to pay and if they want to continue the service.
So, to touch on that, and I'm going to direct this to you, Mr. City Manager, respectfully, and I don't mean this disparagingly at all, Mr. Streets, but it's been my consistent experience over the last 25 years as a lawyer, that particularly dealing with lawyers. If it's not got a deadline on it, it doesn't get attention. And the idea of, if we're buying three years now, it doesn't get dealt with for three years, respectfully, I'd like to ask that we work in earnest way before the three years is up, so we don't find ourselves in another situation where, "Well, sorry, we've got nobody else at the wheel," type of thing, that can come to the table. And I don't, I don't mean that disparagingly at all.
We weren't the only, we weren't the only city. So, just so you know, there were other communities that didn't have a choice either. This, this wasn't, we looked at it a year ago and said, "Hey, can we do this?" They said, "Sorry, can't bid it."
Right.
That wasn't just unique to Midwest City.
Right.
That situation or circumstances actually across the state of Oklahoma.
But to dovetail it to what Mr. Sullivan said, respectfully, I mean, we do need to survey the citizens, and we do need to figure out, okay, what is the, what is the price point, you know, that is the, the bleed point essentially, as to whether you'd rather just go ahead and eliminate recycling services or have just a depository like we do for, for big cardboard and for glass type of thing that, that we're operating, so to speak, and whether that's feasible or not sooner rather than later. Or, I mean, do you want us to go to using just straight trash services, noting that if we go to straight trash services, these hundreds of thousands of pounds?
Millions.
Thank you, would be ending up in our landfill, and there's no ability to get the, the post-recycling, reuse of the product, et cetera. But I would just ask that we, we create a, a tickler deadline of, "Okay, we're still moving on this," because otherwise, it, we have a lot of stuff going on in the city, and the staff is really strapped for time, and I'm, I'm not trying to undermine that whatsoever.
I think by just having this discussion, we'll put some emphasis on it, because now we're telling them we want something back.
And three years is an appropriate amount. We could have recommended five, but we have three years.
I respect that completely. I just, I just wanted to have the conversation. And I just have one voice, so if anybody else wants to jump in this conversation. But I, I mean, I think that's just something we need to examine.
I think you're right. Start cutting out, still looking forward to have your statement.
I agree with all of that, and thank you both for educating us, and thank you for really being advocates for saving the planet in, in a healthy way. But I just wanted to ask those questions just because there's a lot of new information coming out, and I just want to make sure the intent is, you know, what we're achieving. And along to what you said, Mr. Streets, it seems like we have a lot of consumers in our municipality who are using that service, and I look forward to finding out more through the survey as well.
Well, Rick one and Rick two, and you guys can fight out to see which one is which.
Do you either, you guys have either, anything to say?
No, other than the fact that I was the president.
I was, I was on the council when we went. I was on the council that put recycling in Midwest City.
You were on the council when Moses was directing traffic.
Basically, that was it. That was it. And I can remember thinking, "I've never recycled anything in my life, and I don't even give a flip about recycling until we got it." And, and one thing I can remember at the time was, gee, all of you guys that have, and I still have two regular carts, which I use like two days a year, my other one. But people that got rid of their second cart that they were paying for and came out ahead by having a blue cart there instead of another green cart.
Yes, if you can imagine, a second cart is four bucks, you know, and, and your recycling is near the same price for that cart. And so it's a little bit of a challenge. In fact, I would even use one of our staff members, Brandon, came up to me, Brandon Bundy had said, he said, "You know, here's the crazy part. I fill my recycling cart, and I could use a second one. I never fill my trash cart week over week." So, you know, you talk about, and, and I think it's also interesting. If, I don't, personally, I've not had, I have very few people that come to me and complain or ask questions about recycling or the cost of recycling. Overall, I have more people complain about trash and the cost of trash, or why, you know, for, or whether it's going to be serviced for big trash, bulk waste, and very few people complain about recycling, so...
Please apply your most recent statements, Mr. Street. I knew, Mr. City Manager, that we had Brandon Bundy work with Josh and create a video about how to be a super recycler, because obviously you made some of it.
Yeah.
Well, that being said, since we made Brandon in charge of relish, we made him now in charge of recycling. Is, is there a motion on this?
Second.
Okay. Had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Now we move into new business and public discussion. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to talk about the municipal authority agenda? Seeing nobody, we'll move on to further information. There's no action on there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Jern from the, what were you in? Municipal Authority. Okay, so, adjourn from the, what were you in? Municipal Authority, should just, can move on to the Memorial Hospital Authority Agenda, and we have a consent agenda.
Move to approve consent.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Consent agenda passes. Discussion item number one, Mr.?
No action needed.
Okay. We have new business, public discussion. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to talk about the Memorial Hospital Authority Agenda? Seeing none, full adjourn from that, and move on to Special Economic Development Authority Agenda, and we have a consent agenda. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Discussion item number one.
Discussion, consideration, possible action to amend and/or approve a contract with Garber Engineering, Norman, Oklahoma, for a total contract price of $188,200 for the purposes of developing construction plans for the design of a railroad switch and spur to serve the American Glass Inc. facility and Soldier Creek Industrial Park, 7450 Northeast 23rd.
Move to approve.
Second, and Mr. Coleman, again, thank you so much for your advocacy for the northeast side and your investment in bringing these projects to that part of town. Thank you so much.
To Team Sport.
Okay, there is, I do have an ask of the council on this item. Is it sometime in August? Do you have a date yet for the groundbreaking at American Glass?
Don't have that yet. We're gonna, the, uh, American Glass, uh, closing is probably going to be on August the 8th, but we've still got to work out a couple of things, so I would anticipate it will probably be two to three weeks after that.
The, the ask I have is the local development, the TIF committee met again, and we passed everything through. And we had a groundbreaking in here for Centrillium last month, or earlier this month. It was inside because the weather was bad. The Lieutenant Governor was here, and Russell Smith and I were talking to him, and we made a comment that, uh, about how the TIF committee was ready to approve the TIF in five minutes. And, and the Lieutenant Governor just, literally just about fell out of his chair. Said that Midwest City is, he couldn't believe how willing the people of Midwest City are to engage in a TIF, because there was some cities in a different part of the state that would not do TIFs, and they were losing out on a bunch of economic development. And Lieutenant Governor was extremely impressed about the willingness of our community to be involved, what Robert Coleman does. So, I, I beg you, he's committed to be here at the groundbreaking, correct? He said he was gonna, Lieutenant Governor was going to be here.
We're trying to work with the staff to set, to set up something that will work for both parties.
Please show up when we do it, because that is going to be a huge deal, not just having the business here, but how it will look out there as people come into Midwest City. So, if you can be there at the, hopefully, it's a groundbreaking and not a cookie show like we had here at the, but it was, there was good cookies. But, uh, it would, it would bode well for the city if, if you all could show up.
Well, these railroad road, these railroad projects are possible because of the TIF district. And the TIF district is possible because of very hard-working people 20, 23 years ago that established Midwest City's first district, which to my knowledge is the only TIF district that has ever completely paid for itself in Oklahoma County. So, we've got a really good credit line, plus we have some excellent partners in the taxing entities who want to see the city's betterment.
Two points. One, I was at Soldier Creek Park the day that we started it. Remember, it was a freezing cold day. We had a tent set up. We had Tom Cole, we had James Langford, we had all these guys. We had people from the railroad were there. And, and for years, I thought, what was the point of having the railroad people there? Because they were boasting on, boy, we're ready to start running trains out of here, and this is wonderful. This is wonderful that we're doing that. Point two, my daughter lives in Choctaw. She went to a group, a meeting the other night. A TIF was brought up. She calls me, and she goes, Dad, I know why Choctaw has nothing, because the place went crazy on, you don't want a TIF. It's the worst thing to ever get. And as I told my daughter, that's why Midwest City's got what we do, because we do a TIF. They, and they voted down a bond issue to fix them. And, uh, but, but I said, that's why Midwest City is where we are. You know, I, explaining to her, you can have a bunch of land that's basically worthless. You can put it in a TIF, and then it starts paying off. But all these people, if they don't see the money coming in on day one, they don't get it. And, but you do a wonderful job, and this is, is great news, because I can remember, I've, I've got a picture in my phone of us over there the day that we did the groundbreaking for the Soldier Creek Industrial Park, and I've driven by that 10,000 times, thinking, is anything ever going to be there?
And remembered how cold you were.
And it's wonderful.
I would, I would also be remiss if I didn't thank Garber Engineering. Brett Caviness came in and has waited us out in case you had any questions for him, but they've done since an excellent job in working with us on this contract, contracts. I was hoping you wouldn't.
I have a motion in the second. See one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no? Seeing none. Number two.
Discussion, consideration, possible action to amend and/or approve a contract with Garber Engineering, Norman, Oklahoma, for a total contract price of $148,096 for the purposes of developing construction plans for the design of a railroad switch and spur to serve Centrillium Proteins Project at 7210 Northeast 36.
And the big thing to know on the Centrillium, it's not a kill facility, and a lot of people will ask about that. So, if anybody asks you, it is not a kill facility.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes. Public discussion, Special Economic Development Authority Agenda. Anybody got anything? Nope. Uh, we'll adjourn and move into the Economic Development Commission Agenda. Discussion item.
Discussion, consideration, possible action approving the March 28th, 2023 meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, new business, public discussion of the Economic Development Commission Agenda. Has anybody got anything? Seeing none? Move on to further information, and that's what number one and number two are, further information. So, we'll adjourn from that. We'll look for a motion to move back into the council.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Second.
Okay. Just write them down, one, two. That's Rick one, that's Rick two. They can fight over the numbers. Okay, we'll move into executive session.
Exactly.
Okay, we're into Rick four and Rick.
We're. All right. Discussion, consideration, possible action entered to an executive session is allowed under Title 25, Section 307B. Before discussed confidential communications between a public body, its attorney, concerning a pending investigation, claim, or action of the public body when the advice of its attorney determines a disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation, or proceeding in the public interest, and authorizing the city manager to take action as appropriate based on discussion regarding Resolution 2023-12 that declared buildings 401A, 401B, 403, 405, 407, 409, 411, 413, 415, 433, 437, and 439 located at 1200 North Air Depot Boulevard as dilapidated.
Lieutenant, a motion?
Move to adjourn to executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Ladies and gentlemen, we're now in executive session. If you don't have any business in the executive session.